Okay. Everyone, can you please silence your phone as to not disturb our meeting? And tonight, I've called a order this regularly scheduled meeting of the 34th City Council for April 12th, 2022 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Hamud.
Present.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember Al-Sawafi.
Here.
Councilmember Herrick.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Council President Serini.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn the council meeting over to Councilman Robert Abraham. Mr. Abraham?
Thank you, Council President. A little break in protocol today. We're going to change it up so if everybody can pay attention to our format tonight. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Father Anthony Papaski from St. Clement's Authentic Eastern Orthodox Church, who will give the invocation for tonight's meeting. I would ask everybody to please stand for the invocation and wait for instructions on the Pledge of Allegiance following the invocation to tonight's meeting.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here. It's a great honor to be here present. Let us pray to the Lord. Almighty God, our help and refuge, the fountain of wisdom and tower of strength, who know that we can do nothing without your guidance and help, assist us and direct us to divine wisdom and power, that we may fulfill this service to our city, our community, our state, our country diligently and according to the law of our country, so our work may be profitable for this community. For you is the kingdom and the power and the glory of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, now and forever and unto the ages of ages. Amen. Thank you.
Father, I appreciate that. So as Councilman Abraham indicated, we have a little break in protocol. So tonight, we have -- thank you again, Father. I appreciate it. We have Mona Alawi from Blue Hands United. Mona, if you'd like to step up forward. And we also have three students from the City of Dearborn Public School System.
Yes.
With the autism and are going to read the pledge with us tonight. Is that right?
Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity.
Of course.
And thank you for all of your support. We are very honored today. Ms. Sue Lattick, she's an ASD teacher at Dearborn High School. She has attended us tonight with three students, Hussein Al-Turki, Hassan Al-Salah, and Gabe Haydar, who would like to come and do the pledge.
Okay. If you guys would like to come up here, this mic is really good and you can read right in. So we're going to turn around as a council and face our flag. And when you're ready, we're going to start together, okay?
Excuse me. Yeah.
Can I be in the middle?
Yes, you're good. So you guys ready?
Yep.
Okay, we're going to turn around. Go ahead when you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Thank you, guys. So guys, Chief, they would like to just -- if the three young men would like to stand right up here in the front and they could take a photo real quick with the mayor.
Can I take a picture with that?
Yeah. Okay. If we could try to get closer, if we can, guys, yeah.
Did you reply?
Okay, Mayor? Yeah, you're right there, yeah.
I don't.
All right.
No, I don't.
Thank you, guys.
Chief should be in it. Chief, come on in.
Hop in.
Get to the -- yep.
There you go.
Oh.
Well, we'll give both of our chiefs a hug with that.
Yeah.
There you go. Excellent job.
All right. Two chiefs.
One, two.
Excellent job.
Great job.
Snap chat. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that, Father. Thank you, Mona and you. How did I do? At this time, I would like to have a motion to suspend the rules of orders moving forward to Agenda Items 31 and 32. Sorry. Okay, if you could hear me, apologize. Thank you, everyone. We are going to -- I'm looking for a motion to suspend the rules of orders at this time. Motion by Councilman Hamud. And we need a support in order to move to --
Support.
-- support by Councilman Al-Sawafi. And this, we are going to be asking to move items number 31 and 32 ahead. Mr. Clerk, can we please -- a unanimous rule will be attached, hearing no objections to the suspension of rules. Hearing none, so is attached. Mr. Clerk, can we have item number 31?
Item 31, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Burns, recognizing April 2022 as National Autism Awareness Month in the City of Dearborn and calling this observance to the attention of all of our employees, residents, and members of the business community.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Clerk. So item 31 and 32 was brought forward by my colleagues, Councilwoman Herrick and Council President Protemp, Erin Burns. So I would like to turn it over to either one of them to make a few comments on today's national autism recognition.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you to Blue Hands United and the other organizations in Dearborn that work with our autistic community, especially providing education to the public about individuals with special needs. We brought forth this resolution to put it on the record that autism is a spectrum disorder and it's a neurological and developmental disorder that affects communication behaviors of those affected. And in that light, we wanted to bring more attention to this here in Dearborn so that people are more aware to watch out for those who might need an extra hand. And I know that our police department and our fire department have ongoing training to assist those with special needs. And I'd like to mention that there's also a special needs registry here in Dearborn, and you can contact the Dearborn Police Department if you have a family member with any type of special need, so that if the police or fire department are called to your home in an emergency situation, they're already aware that someone in your family or living in your home has a special need. So with that in mind, Councilwoman Burns, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Herrick. Thank you. Very well stated. I would echo Councilwoman Herrick's sentiments. This is a very important month, recognizing members of our community who are part of the autism spectrum and part of that very special community. For our young people, our adults, our caregivers, loved ones, educators, there are so many folks who go into making the autism community the very special community that it is. And we're very privileged to have three young gentlemen here with us tonight. Thank you for starting off our meeting so well. We very much appreciate that. And just look forward to continuing to work with folks throughout the autism community to make sure that everyone in Dearborn is proactively included and just has access to all of the resources they could need to live life to the fullest. And we very much appreciate all of the wonderful work that our educators and our community leaders and families and loved ones are doing. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Council President Protemp, Burns. If there's any other comments or questions on this item, if not, the unanimous rule will be attached. And Mr. Clerk, can we have the next item, item 32?
Item 32, resolution by councilmembers Abraham and Need of Support, proclaiming April 2022 to be National Arab American Heritage Month in the City of Dearborn, and encourage our entire community to commemorate this special observance.
Okay. Councilman Al-Sawafi?
Supported.
Supported by Councilman Al-Sawafi. Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay. So again, this is again another recognized national holiday, National Arab American Heritage Month. And this was brought forward by Councilman Abraham. So Councilman Abraham, I'd like to turn it over to you at this time.
Yes, this resolution will bring National Arab American Heritage Month to Dearborn at the local level. It's important to know this initiative was started back in 2017 by a small group of nonprofits. In 2019, Arab American Heritage Month was recognized by the State of Michigan. And earlier this year, at the federal level and national level, the President and Congress also established the recognition of April as Arab American Heritage Month. And I think it's very important, obviously, in our community that we also recognize our heritage, our community, our ethnicity, and our culture. And I think this is an excellent way to send that message outward to the rest of the world.
Thank you, Councilman Abraham. Councilman Al-Sawafi, would you like to add onto that?
Thank you, Council President. The United States is home to roughly 4 million Arab Americans, and 34th Dearborn City Council is proud to recognize April as National Arab American Heritage Month. Dearborn is incredibly diverse, beautiful, and is home to the largest Arab American concentration in the United States. Arab Americans, like many of their fellow citizens, are a part of the strong diversity of this nation. Arab Americans have contributed to every field and profession. They are our police officers, doctors, entrepreneurs, and my fellow military members who selflessly serve this country in uniform with honor and pride.
Thank you, Councilman Al-Sawafi. And Councilman Abraham, well said. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions?
If I may, Council President?
Yes, of course, ma'am.
I just want to take the opportunity to recognize all the Arab American employees, directors, the council persons as well, many of you up here, and for the various contributions the Arab Americans have made, not only to the City of Dearborn but across the country. It's certainly something to be recognized, something that we're proud of. It's a very broad and beautiful diaspora here in the City of Dearborn, and each with its own contribution. And so we're proud to be the home of the largest Arab American concentration and look forward to the years to come.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Great that it also comes during the holy month of Ramadan, too, so that's a little tough, so we'll get through it tonight, so I appreciate it. All right, hearing no other comments, unanimous rule will be attached. And Mr. Clerk, can we now return to the regular scheduled agenda, which should be number four?
All right.
Thank you.
Item four, resolution by councilmembers Herrick.
I'm sorry, one second. Do we need a -- do we need a motion to return back to the regular schedule?
Well, no, not to return back, but to break the order.
Break the order.
We did.
Oh, then I just didn't get -- then you're correct.
Yeah, we did motion and we had unanimous response. No, that's okay. And we had unanimous support. I know there's a requirement of five on that. So now we'll return to item number four. Mr. Clerk, can you proceed?
Sure. Item four, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Paris approving the minutes of the previous special meeting of April 5th, 2022, and the regular meeting of March 22nd, 2022.
Okay, are there any deletions, additions, or modifications to the minutes? If not, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, please.
Item five, ordinance on the table. It's ordinance number 22-1741. This is an ordinance to amend the Traffic and Motor Vehicles Chapter, Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Chapter 18, Article 2, Division 6, Section 18-278, entitled Reckless Driving, resolution by councilmembers Paris and Herrick to take from the table for its final reading.
Okay, unanimous rule will be attached, take this from the table for its final reading. The city's reckless driving code ordinance number 18-278 needs to be amended to reflect the same penalties imposed by the state's reckless driving statute. The current ordinance is punishable by a maximum of 90 days in jail and/or up to $100 in fine. The change will mirror state law, which is now required to be 93, up to 93 days in jail and up to a $500 fine. Amending the ordinance will help deter reckless driving by imposing stiffer penalties for drivers that violate the ordinance. This is the second final reading of this ordinance. Is there any questions or comments on this item? Okay. If not, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
Yes, this is the final reading of ordinance number 22-1741, entitled An Ordinance to Amend the Traffic and Motor Vehicle Chapter, Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Chapter 18, Article 2, Division 6, Section 18-278, entitled Reckless Driving.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember Al-Sawafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Councilmember Burns.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Seven yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item six, ordinance number 22-1748, introduced by Councilwoman Burns, synopsis and ordinance to amend the administrative chapter, Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 4, titled Purchasing and Disposition of Goods and Services of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 2-566 to 2-576.
All right, thank you. Before us is a request to amend the city's purchasing ordinance, and the proposed amendment includes additions to definition sections to -- or to -- I'm sorry, definition section of the ordinance will clarify the meaning and terms used in the ordinance of purchasing process. The standards will also define the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, create a preference for Dearborn-based and veteran-owned businesses in Dearborn as well, as well as creating a diversity component, which will have outreach to minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, and persons with disability-owned businesses in Dearborn. There is also added a liquidated damages provision, which will also protect the city against vendors that do not comply to the terms of the contract. The purpose of these amendments is to create a more equitable purchasing process and that emphasizes the importance on local businesses and diversity, and establishes standards that will ensure the city obtains the highest quality and value for its contracts and purchases. This amendment will go into effect the second week of May. It requires two readings at the council and 10 days approximately after. This is the first reading, and if there's any questions or concerns on this, from my colleagues. Councilman Al-Sawafi. Councilman Al-Sawafi.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. I'm happy to see this item move along. This is something that I was passionate about from the beginning and even during the campaign trail. I know, as a business development manager for the county and as a previous small business owner, I know the importance of keeping dollars in the community, so I'm happy to see this move along. One thing that I wanted more information on is how many preference points does a small business in Dearborn get?
Well, let's ask the drafter. Our city attorney or mayor?
Yeah, so it's 10 for Dearborn-based business, it's five for a veteran-based business.
Okay, that's great. And one thing I'd like to see that's not here is conducting more workshop and outreach on folks that want to participate and want to do business with the city. You know, how is that process like? So I know sometimes it takes a workshop to kind of get people more involved and understand of the process.
So we plan on doing that. What we have been doing for our procurement process, we've already been reaching out to various groups and associations to try to link up with the vendors that are associated with said associations, to get them on our email list, so that when something goes out for RFP or for procurement, that their members are notified. And if you'll see in this ordinance before you, we talk about how we can hopefully beef up our procurement process to entice minority-owned, woman-owned, person with disability-owned businesses as well, and hopefully expand our outreach in those capacities.
That's great. Thank you, Mayor. I just know that sometimes it's an intimidating process for some that have not been through it, so it's great that we're doing this outreach. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Paris.
Thank you, Council President. I did have just a couple of questions. First, I'd like to know if somebody would be able to either answer from purchasing or the administration what the threshold is now for a council. Is it 30,000 yet?
29,300.
29,300? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. I did have an opportunity to take a look at some of the comparables, and I know for this ordinance amendment, it was Sterling Heights, Lansing, and Wayne County mostly that the information came from. One thing that I didn't notice in this purchasing ordinance, though, was a component that dealt with technology compatibility. And I don't know our process, you know, forgive me for that, but I know we have our purchaser here, but I don't know what the process is of evaluating the bids, whether there in fact is a technology component to that, to weigh in either ahead of time or during the procedure to determine bid winners.
Good evening, Council President, distinguished councilmembers, Mayor, Mark Rosinski, purchasing manager. As far as RFPs are concerned, there's actually an evaluation team made up by a couple of people from the requesting department, as well as others that are affiliated closely with the RFP, whatever the procurement may be. But that is how it gets evaluated. We have a pre-bid meeting where we discuss the solicitation before it goes out, and then we have a meeting to discuss all of the bids that come in, all the proposals.
So is there a technology component, though, you know, for reviewing this, you know, because basically everything we should be doing with so many things that we need to do on a technological basis, citywide, to make sure that we at least get some input from our TI department?
Understood. And if typically, if there's an RFP that relates to a technological aspect, we'll probably most likely have someone, maybe even the director or someone from TI, be involved in the process.
Okay. The only other thing that I noticed, I believe it's Lansing, that they have a objective that the mayor reports complaints and reports back quarterly to the city council as far as any issues with the bid process, because this is why we have this ordinance now before us to begin with. We recognize that there are some problems, some difficulty maybe getting enough people to go ahead and go through our purchasing process. And I'm just wondering whether it be through the annual administrative report that comes out in September to include it somehow, or at least come back with some sort of a reporting mechanism back to council, how we're doing, what are the metrics, how are we performing? Have we done what we're asking to do by this ordinance?
Here. I'm just trying to get the microphone on, sorry. Thank you for that question, Councilman. What else? I see no problem with trying to come back to report back to council. I think one of the strongest metrics in which you're going to hopefully see success is in the number of people bidding on a specific RFP that comes before council, so you actually see it real time. But I think it'll be worthwhile for us to visit periodically, to come back, you know, after, you know, half a year, a year, a quarter, whatever it might be, to present information on how we've done and see how we can continue to improve. So we're not opposed to that.
Okay. You know, in particular, with the diversity procurement, we have a lot of moving parts in this ordinance and be able to get information out. I'm just hoping that we're not going to be convoluted by so many people not quite understanding what the process is, because we have so many preferential, you know, to some of the bidders. And I just want to make sure in fairness to everybody that somewhere down the road that they would have a complaint resolution process, that either going through purchasing through the administration, and we would be, as council, aware of it.
Correct. And if I can just clarify, the procurement section for outreach to minority-owned businesses or woman-owned or person with disability is just outreach. It's just informing them that the RFP is open and for them to submit. And so it's more the onus on us to curate those lists, to make sure that we're diversifying our traditional pool, so it's not the same two or three vendors who apply for every single bid as we've seen with the RFPs that have come forward. Thank you for that question.
Of course. Thank you, Mayor. I think one point that might be good to notify or explain to the residents, to Mr. Romer, is regarding the actual Dearborn-based business aspect, where in the past, they would not, they would have to match the lowest bid, or in this case, that's being changed. Can you explain that a little bit better?
10%, right? Go for it. Yeah, so the past ordinance had a, the preference was a matching component, as opposed to being within a percentage of the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and then being awarded that contract if you're within that threshold.
Correct.
That's what we changed. Now for Dearborn-based businesses, if you're within 10%, you are deemed the lowest responsive responsible bidder, and veterans, if they're within 5%.
And if I may briefly, to Councilman Paris's point on technology, we incorporated a lot of those pieces into the definition section. So if you look under lowest responsible and responsible, we expanded that to include those components, and technology is a component within that definition and the criteria. When the group gets together to evaluate, they're considering that component as part of that definition.
And the intent behind this ordinance is, you know, at the state, in my time at the state, we adopted and pushed forward legislation that gave a preference or a deference to Michigan-based companies over out-of-state companies. And we'd like to do the same thing here in the City of Dearborn, so our dollars stay within our local economy and really, you know, feed back in a cycle.
Thank you, Mayor. That's why I wanted to highlight that point. And the pass, as indicated by our corporation and council, that it really wasn't a match, because if you had to match the lowest bidder, and some of the bidders could not, and that's why the percentage. So I do appreciate that. I thought that was a significant change, and also the veteran aspect is a significant change, and since they are paying the taxes, I think it makes sense, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Rosinski. Anything further from my colleagues? Okay. Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading of this item?
Yes, this is the first reading of ordinance number 22-1742, entitled An Ordinance to Amend the Administration, Chapter, Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 4, titled Purchasing and Disposition of Goods and Services of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 2-566 to 2-576, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Abraham to table the ordinance.
Okay, and unanimous rule will be attached unless hearing objections. Hearing so, hearing none, so is attached. Next item, please.
Item seven, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Burns, approving the Michigan Department of Transportation contract number 21-5538, with the city's share in the amount of $375,200 for hot mix asphalt, cold milling, and resurfacing work along U. Highway, US 12, Michigan Avenue, from Elm Street to Firestone Street, subject to review by the legal department, also authorizing the mayor to sign the contract on behalf of the city and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, thank you. The existing asphalt surface on Michigan Avenue between Elm Street and Firestone Street was approximately three miles, is deteriorated, and is in need of resurfacing. The Michigan Department of Transportation, or MDOT, this contract is requesting to remove this existing asphalt and to replace the two layers of hot asphalt mix, as well as curbs and many other surface areas around it. The scheduled work is for, the resurfacing scheduled work is for years 2022 and 2023. The resurfacing work on east of Southfield Freeway is slated to start for 2022 this year, while the rest of the work west of Southfield is slated to start in 2023. The total estimated project is $10,877,800, of which the city's share is estimated of $375,200. It is requested that the council prove this contract, subject to review of legal department, and additionally, that the mayor be authorized to sign the contract on behalf of the city with immediate effect. Any questions or comment on this item? Okay. Hearing none, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, please.
Item eight, resolution by councilmembers Abraham and Herrick, authorizing a sole source purchase from Library Design Associates, Inc., in the amount of $84,440 for shelving for the Henry IV Centennial Library, and requesting immediate effect.
The library department recommends a sole source purchase of new shelving from the Library Design Association, Incorporated. The value of the purchase is $84,444, and the shelving is being purchased matched to existing shelving in the building right now. This is phase two of the Henry IV Centennial Library Furniture Renovation Project, and the goal is to continue a cohesive design in the building, upgrading the shelves to match existing and allowing shelves to have music, CDs shelving, paperback shelving, and new book shelving will also be replaced. The funding is coming from the library fund, the capital and equipment budget. It is requested that council authorize this purchase with immediate effect. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Hearing none, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, please.
Item nine, resolution by councilmembers Burns and Herrick, awarding a contract to Zaniga Cement Construction, Inc., in the amount of $3,596,914 for street and alley pavement replacement, 2022, also authorizing the city engineer to execute all change orders or modifications, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you. So street and alley pavement replacement work is performed annually, and it's to complete spot repairs throughout the city's major streets, local streets, and the alley pavement, to perform repairs on sewer and water drainage structures and to replace sidewalks having trip hazards as well. Approximately 900 spot repairs to the pavement and 200 spot replacement on sidewalks throughout the city has been identified to be performed under this contract. Zaniga Cement Construction, Incorporated, has been satisfactory performing these works for the city for the last five years. Engineering recommends that Zika, that the contract be awarded to Zika Cement Construction, which has submitted the lowest responsive and responsible bid of $3,759,621. This contract provisions has two separate annual renewals upon mutual agreement between the city and the contractor as well. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 10, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Hamud, awarding a contract to Midwest Excavation LLC in the amount of $304,500, with a contingency in the amount of $40,000 for sewer repair and the easement phase three, also authorizing the city engineer to execute all change orders or modifications, and authorizing the finance director to appropriate an additional $400,000 of the sewer fund retained earnings and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, thank you. The engineering division uses a base, uses a, sorry, case-to-case basis on severity of sinkholes regarding the risk and hazard that they are, that they risk to the residents. Midwest Excavation LLC in the amount of $304,500 with a contingency in the amount of $40,000 for sewer repair in the easement phase three, also authorizing the city engineer to execute all change orders or modifications and authorizing the finance director to appropriate an additional $400,000 of the sewer fund retained earnings and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, thank you. The engineering division uses a base, uses a, uses a, sorry, case-to-case basis on severity of sinkholes regarding the risk and hazard that they are, that they risk to the residents. Twenty-nine emergency repairs have been completed. Non-emergency sinkholes were grouped into three phases. Both phase one and two contracts were awarded to Midwest Excavation with both near completion. The Department of Public Works Engineering Division recommends that Phase Three Midwest Excavation LLC will submit at the lowest responsive and responsible bid and has performed satisfactory on the current projects over the last five years. It is requested the finance director authorize and appropriate additional $400,000 of the sewer fund retained earnings for this project. It is also requested that the council authorize and award contingency and appropriation with immediate effect. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 11, resolution by council members Burns and Herrick awarding a contract to Wright Energy Solutions in the amount of $31,825 for LED lighting update at Dearborn Ice Skating Center.
Okay, the Dearborn Ice Skating Center has been diligent in pursuing energy cost savings to improve the bottom line operations. The Dearborn Center is replacing 50 T5 light fixtures in the Adria Arena with more energy-efficient LED light fixtures. These light fixtures consume 50% less electricity, along with availability of DTE rebates. It is estimated to have a run-on investment return of three years. Eight bids were received, and it's recommended that they award the contract to Wright Energy Solutions, which was submitted the lowest responsive and responsible bid in the amount of $31,825. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, unanimous rule will be attached. Can we have the next item, please?
Item 12, resolution by council members Burns and Paris awarding a one-year contract with two one-year renewal options to industrial painting in the amount of $69,860 for interior painting of vacant units at Hubbard Manor East and Hubbard Manor West and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, Public Works and Facilities Housing Division recommends that they award the contract for interior painting on vacant units in Hubbard Manors East and West to industrial painting, which has submitted the lowest responsive and responsible bid. The contract shall be for a term of one year with a two-year extension. It, renewal options not to exceed $69,860 per contract. It is requested that council authorize and award appropriation in order to proceed with interior painting of the vacant units as soon as possible and is requesting immediate effects. Is there any questions or concerns on this item? Councilman Elswoff.
Thank you, Council President. You know, there's a national shortage for housing in the United States right now, and this shortage is especially amplified for low-income senior citizens. And I know we previously approved items related to the rehab of the Hubbard Manors. My question is, what else do we need to do to get these units back out to the market?
Mayors, is there some?
Director Hawkins is here, but what I'll speak to is, you know, everything we have coming before you is what we're trying to do to get them back out. You know, previously, we had the, the ordinance, the resident, what are you calling these? Ordinances or resolutions? Councilman Abraham, which term should I use?
You gotta tell me what you're talking about.
Okay. So previously, there was what came before the council, I'll frame it that way, to fix the bathrooms on the main floor, and then we have one about regarding the furniture, which is coming back. This is about the painting of the individual units, and so we're doing what we can to hopefully move them forwardly as quickly as possible. Resolution, ordinance, whatever it might be. We're doing our best.
Resolution.
I'm working on reading your mind, I'm just not there yet.
No, we do appreciate it as well, taking Councilman Elswoff in. We do appreciate it, as well as Director Hawkins, the diligence he's doing. We do understand that there's a time constraint, and I think the price was very reasonable.
Correct.
And there's also, as needed, and it's going to continue to go.
And we're not sitting on them, because the longer they lay vacant means the less likely we're going to collect and the more expenses we accrue. And so we're trying to move these forward as quickly as possible to get families or seniors into these units.
Absolutely. Councilman Elswoff.
Is there a timeframe when we think we can have these completed? Is there something else that we need to approve to get these out to the market?
Yeah, we turn over, they turn over fairly quick, and so as soon as this moves forward, we'll get the painters into these at least 13 vacant units and then hopefully get families in, or seniors in afterwards. We have a waitlist, and so it's traditionally fairly quick that they get filled.
All right, thank you, Mayor, for making this a priority.
Appreciate it, thank you, Mayor. Any other comments or question on this item? Right, hearing and seeing none, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 13, resolution by council members Burns and Hamud awarding a two-year contract with up to three one-year renewal options to SCI Flooring Covering, Inc., in the amount of $119,070 for as-needed flooring installation of Hubbard Manor East and Hubbard Manor West and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you. The purchasing department recommends the competitive purchase as as-needed flooring installation be rewarded to SCI Flooring, Floor Covering, Incorporated, which has submitted the lowest responsive and responsible bid and has provided similar service for the city in the past. The contract shall be for a two-year period with up to three one-year renewal options. The Housing Division is requesting approval of the contract, the annual amount not to exceed $119,070 to, again, SCI Flooring Covering, Incorporated, as flooring needed, installation at Hubbard Manor East and Hubbard Manor West. The Housing Division estimates that 85 units will be, will need flooring units, I'm sorry, will need flooring services annually, and orders will be placed as needed through the term of the contract in order to ensure uninterrupted service for vacant and unit turnover. The request for replacing floor, the flooring in occupied units and as needed repairs throughout the building is requested to have immediate effect. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 14, resolution by council members Abraham and Burns authorizing the second of four one-year renewal options with DC Law, PLLC, and the law offices of Ashraf Alwami, PLLC, in the amount of $182,000 for indigent defense services and requesting immediate effect.
All right, the city of Dearborn currently has contracts with Atlaw Group, DC Law, PLS, LC, and the law firm of Ashraf Al, how'd you say that, George?
I don't know. I said Alwami, I hope I got it correct.
Alwami, I'm not sure either.
Okay.
PLCC for on-duty arraignment for attorney coverage. Each of these contracts include a four one-year renewal options at the original pricing, terms, and conditions. The purchasing division is requesting that the 19th District Court initiated a second renewal option of these contracts, which will be valid through September 30th of 2022. The request is necessary to require and maintain compliance with the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, which is MIDC standard four, which is council at first appearance. The on-duty arraignment attorney is paid $100 per hour. The rate is approved by the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, and expenditures are fully grant-funded by the state of Michigan through the MIDC. Two out of the three firms have chosen to exercise their option to renew. Atlaw Group has chosen not to renew this contract at this time. In order to maintain compliance with MIDC standard four, immediate effect is requested. Any questions or concerns on this item? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 15, resolution by council members Herrick and Paris.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's someone here from that item?
Is that a public defender?
Ma'am, if you'd like to come forward, it is. If you'd like to come forward, a state have a question?
And that was it. Is that a public defender?
Yeah, so, if you'd like to come forward, I'll address it. Yeah, ma'am, what it is, it's a state program, and it is funded by the state of Michigan, and what it does is it provides an attorney for the defendant who doesn't have the funds at the most critical aspect of the court hearings, which is the first arraignment.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay. George, next item, please.
Okay. Item 15, resolution by council members Herrick and Paris authorizing the extension of the current contract with Ultimate Parking Management, LLC, in the amount of $208,919.17 for parking deck management resulting in a new expiration date of March 31st, 2023, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the renewal of this contract provides the city with parking deck management for the two decks located at 22201 and 22351 West Village Drive, as well as Wagner Place Parking Deck. The management company will provide property management, cleaning, maintenance, as needed services regarding security using competitive processes. The purchasing division has received and requests from the Department of Public Works to extend this contract for one year, which will expire March 31st, 2023, which will allow the time for the city to explore other options for parking deck management. Ultimate Parking Management, LLC has provided satisfactory performance to, in order to ensure the services remain and do not become uninterrupted, immediate effect is being requested. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilman Elswoff.
Thank you, Council President. You know, when I was going over this item, I seen that we renewed with the same company four times, which for me, sometimes is a concern. Sometimes there's better prices out there for the same services. So my question was, you know, what was the intent? Because it looks like we didn't want to go out with the RFP, we tried to do an extension, and now we need another extension. I know I touched base with you, Mayor, a little bit, and it's part of your plan to be more efficient, bring some things in-house. If you could touch that, on that a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely, Councilman. You know, to your, to your point, we're evaluating all of the contracts that we're outsourcing at the current time period. What we'd love to do is actually bring many of these contracts in-house and in-source them, but we have just a few shortages as it pertains to equipment and labor. And so it's our hope that with just one more year of extending, that our DPW and Facilities Department will have this next year to kind of rebuild, to hopefully bring in a lot of these contracts. I think this is one that's prime for the taking and hopefully bringing in and expanding out, and so, but that's hopefully our game plan between now and next year.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And you know, the reality is, is that we don't have the same budget anymore, and we can't be doing the same thing. So I appreciate you kind of making this a priority to bring some things at home. It's always good to do what you do best and outsource the rest, but when it makes sense, we want to bring it in-house. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Elswoff. Any questions or, any other question or comments on this? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 16, resolution by council members Herrick and Hamud authorizing additional expenditures to Comp One in the amount of $46,000, resulting in a total contract amount of $268,100 for the contract for workers' compensation, third-party administrative service, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, and the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, the state of Michigan required that first, that any first responder with any COVID-19-related cases were to be expensed through the city's existing workman's compensation service, leading to increases in expenditures. The city currently has a purchase order in the amount of $122,100 authorized by Council Resolution 3-9620 for workman's compensation, third-party administrative service contracts with Comp One. The city council authorized additional expenditures of $100,000 on City Council Resolution 8-356-21. Purchasing has received and requested from the law department to add an additional $46,000 to that purchase order for the necessary administrative fees that will result in a total purchase offer, sorry, purchase order value of $268,100. It is requested that the council authorize additional expenditures to avoid gaps in service and is requested immediate effect. Any questions or comments on this item? Just Mayor, I have one, or maybe Mr. Romer can answer. Is there any plan for any reimbursement whatsoever from the state regarding this, or is it going to be all encompassing in the other, in another aspect that we're getting back?
It's about the FEMA reimbursement, right? Yeah, but he's asking about the state.
Yeah, so from, as my time as a state legislator, I'm not, I wasn't made aware then, and I'm not made aware now of any reimbursement coming. I know we submitted this within our FEMA reimbursement, but FEMA had denied the request.
I was just asking because of the fact that they directed it specifically, if there was a specific reason why they wanted to direct it as opposed to the regular medical, but I understand, I just wanted to make sure.
Correct. The governor made her budget presentation, and nothing was included pertaining to.
Well, I appreciate it, thank you. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 17 has been withdrawn by the administration.
Okay. Can we have the next item, please?
Item 18, I just have a comment.
Councilman Abraham?
I know, I know it's not going forward, but.
Item 17?
Yeah, related to the sinkholes.
Yes.
And the restoration. Mayor, if you could just maybe make a comment. I know this isn't going to happen tonight, but there are some phone calls coming in about should property owners expect to have to do their own restoration? Some of them are being told, as recently as the last two weeks, that they're responsible for restoring the landscaping and the property that was disrupted, fixing sinkholes that were covered from the rainfall and the flood. There are, I believe, about 154 properties that were impacted up to date. Could you just speak to that? Because I think there's a lot of misinformation, or maybe lack of information is probably more appropriate.
Absolutely, Councilman. So as it pertains to the sinkholes, the previous council last year moved forward with covering the full cost of the sinkholes. I think the conversation that expanded at the last COW meeting was, to what extent does the city continue to allow people to file that a sinkhole emerged? Because we're coming in, you know, the seven, in the seven figures that we've spent as a city on resolving these sinkholes. Additionally, it was the recommendation of the administration, we brought forward the full restoration of the properties in which we fixed the sinkholes. So if there were any damaged fence lines, or grass, or things of that nature, that the city would assume responsibility and hopefully restoring the properties for those that we did work on. So that's what the, you know, item 17 is. We're just taking this time to make some modifications to bring it back in a much more concise and clear format.
So the intent is still to bring forward a plan to restore the sinkhole disturbed properties? Because I think that message has to be clearly communicated.
Absolutely.
So that the inspectors can send that out to the residents and not give the opposite message that the city doesn't restore properties and that they're responsible for that.
Absolutely. And Director Hawkins is indicating he's in alignment as well. From our perspective as administration, if we hired a contractor to do such work, we would expect that the restoration was included, that they returned the grounds just as they first arrived to them without the sinkhole. And so we're hoping to do the same and have that responsibility to the city.
All right, thank you for that clarification. That's very important.
No, I appreciate the comment in, Councilman Abraham, and as we indicated at the committee, the whole, the city of Dearborn has a longstanding process of never restoring the property back to the way it was after the sinkhole. So I am glad that the mayor had initiated that, and I know that my colleagues did agree that that's something, but I do appreciate that it should be communicated forward because most of the residents would not expect that to be happening. As we indicated at the committee hall, sometimes the damage is worse on the repaired aspect than it was from the sinkhole. So we do appreciate it, we're looking forward to that coming forward. Mr. Clerk, can we have item number 18?
Item 18, resolution by council members Hamud and Burns extending the current contract with Cummings, McCloy, Davis, and Atro PLC in the amount of $30,000 for continued legal services and future legal services in the matter of Star Indemnity and Liability Company versus the City of Dearborn et al. at the original contracted rate of $200 an hour and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, thank you. Around April 20th, 2021, the city was served with a summons and complaint in the matter of Star Indemnity and Liability Company versus the City of Dearborn et al. with a companion lawsuit for Curry et al. versus the City of Dearborn. This matter is in settlement stage and is recommended that a contract extension in the amount up to $30,000 be approved for Cummings, McCloy, Davis, and Petro PLC for completion of this case. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing and seeing none, next, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 19, resolution by council members Abraham and Herrick extending the current contract with August Law, PLLC, in the amount of $50,000 for continued legal services and future legal services in the matter of Nawal Berry et al. versus the City of Dearborn et al. at the original contracted rate of $250 an hour, also authorizing the finance director to appropriate $50,000 from the sewer fund retained earnings and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, on October 27th, 2021, the city was served with a summons and complaint in the matter of Nawal Berry et al. versus the City of Dearborn et al. It alleged to be a class action lawsuit on behalf of plaintiffs for damages suffered by themselves and other Dearborn residents similarly situated as a result of a water and sewer backup of the June 25th, 26th, 2021 rainstorm event. It is recommended this contract extension in the amount of $50,000 be approved to August Law, PLLC, continue legal services in this, for continued legal services in this case. And is recommended that the finance director be given authority to appropriate the amount from the sewer fund retained earnings, and immediate effect is requested. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 20, resolution by council members Abraham and Paris authorizing the finance director to recognize and appropriate funds in the amount of $350,000 for the Workers' Compensation Fund appropriation settlements and medical expenses and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 2022 Workman's Compensation Fund has experienced high claims and medical-related charges as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and large medical billings, as well as a settlement of two cases in the amount of $210,000, which is in excess of the fiscal year 2022 statements budgets. So the 2022 budget adoption for workman's compensation medical claims was $404,000. The fiscal year 2022 projected medical claims are in excess of the budgeted amount by $156,000. The finance department is requesting appropriation from the operations funds, fund balance, retained earnings transferred out to Workman's Compensation Fund, and to recognize revenue contributions transferred in from the fund, operating funds, and appropriate the medical charges and settlement expenses accounts in the amount of $350,000 and requesting immediate effect. Any questions or comment on this item? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item.
Item 21, resolution by council members Burns and Herrick authorizing the finance director to appropriate funds in the amount of $20,000 from the general fund's fund balance to the clerk's department elections division interpreter fees expenditure account to be used for election translation costs and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, on March 22nd, 2022, the council passed a resolution to have translated ballots and election materials made available to our voters. The language services will provide for greater accessibility to voters of our residents, including language access for election materials, translation of all official ballot notices, absentee ballot applications, registration forms, and appropriate signings and affidavits. The finance department requests, is, requests a $20,000 appropriation from the general fund balance to the clerk department elections division for 20, fund, for $20,000 for election translated cost materials, related materials, translation of all official ballots, notices, absentee ballot applications, registration forms, appropriate signage, and affidavits. The appropriation of $20,000 is only eligible for election translated costs and cannot be reallocated within the clerk's budget and is requesting immediate effect. Any questions or comments on this item? Do we have anybody from the public like to speak on this item? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, please.
Item twenty two, resolution by council members Burns and Abraham approving the addition of two full-time laborer positions and associated funding in the amount of $120,000 annually in the Department of Public Works budget, also authorizing the finance director to make a transfer in the amount of $30,000 out of the Dearborn Hills current budget to the DPW department and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the Department of Public Works and Facilities is requesting authorization in the fiscal year twenty twenty two to increase their current budgeted staffing levels by two full-time labor one positions. These positions would be responsible to maintaining Dearborn Hills Golf Course and designated building maintenance in off-season months as well, and to help remedy the flooding at the golf course. The cost of the two new labor positions will approximately be $120,000 annually, including benefits. Currently, the Recreation Department has a contract with Davy Golf for the maintenance and upkeep of structures in the amount of $298,000, which will be, which will not be renewed. The addition to the two labor positions will create a cost savings of $178,000. The positions will be budgeted in the Public Service Division and be reimbursed through the Recreation Department. Is requested that the council approve the two full-time labor positions as it is associated funding in the Department of Public Works budget with immediate effect. Additionally, the finance director or designee be authorized to add two additional full-time labor positions to the DPW position control in the current fiscal year twenty twenty two budget and authorize up to $30,000 to be transferred out of the Dearborn Hills current budget to the DPW Department of, for reimbursement of these costs across departmental cost sharing. Any questions or comments on this item? Council President, Pro Tem, Burns.
Thank you, Council President Sereni. Really appreciate the administration and Director Tim Hawkins bringing this item forward. I think not only is it really logical in terms of being a cost savings measure, but I think it's also a great way to really invest in and show respect for two employees who have been working under an outsourced contract by bringing them in-house and making them kind of regular City of Dearborn employees. So I'm very happy to see that. I think that's a good trend that I hope to see continue as it, as it can and as it's, as it makes sense in the future. I'm also, I think, particularly excited to see a renewed focus on some environmentally friendly pieces for the golf course, including removing log jams, planting some native plants. I know one of these employees in particular is very passionate and very knowledgeable about that. So I think it's a good move for the golf course now and into the future. So looking forward to more good things to come.
Thank you, Councilwoman. For me as well, I would just like to indicate that the cross-sharing department, I think, is a big deal. I know that some of my colleagues were able to go to the DPW yard on request of Director Hawkins. I know I was there with Councilwoman Burns and Councilman Harris to see firsthand what the structure was in the past, and I do believe that if you have a machine sitting in one area, as Councilman, as Director Hawkins indicated, that someone else should be able to use it if they need it. And I like to see this part, and I'm glad that we're seeing a change in culture and really working together. So we really appreciate it. I do appreciate going through and seeing the conditions of the facilities and what the work environment is, and believe me, it's top of mind, I think that's mayor's term there, and what we're going to do for the future. I know there's a lot going on there, and seem to be an area where DPW was last to be put on the list here, and we are going to work forward towards getting that directed going forward in our budget year. So we do appreciate it, Director Hawkins.
If I may just add one comment, Council President.
Absolutely, Mayor.
In addition to the hiring of these two individuals which will assist the Dearborn Hills Golf Course in the off-season, we'll be able to reassign them in other parts throughout the city. So in addition to the savings that we're generating by not renewing the Davy Golf contract, we're also finding that we'll have two additional helping hands to assist with the other matters throughout the city, be it Parks and Rec or DPW.
Yeah, no, that's very important. Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments on this item?
Yeah.
Councilman Hamud?
I think this is just, I just want to say that this was a good item brought forward by Director Hawkins, and it's these types of things and optimizations that I really look forward to seeing our new administration implement. So thank you, Director Hawkins.
All right. Any other comments or questions on this item? Okay. Hearing seen none, unanimous roll be attached, next item, please.
Item twenty three, resolution by council members Herrick and Abraham authorizing to sell the city-owned property located at thirty four, thirty six Catherine to Al Hamda Holdings LLC in the, in the sum of $11,300 for the purpose of new construction, subject to certain stipulations, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, Hamda Holdings LLC submitted a bid to purchase a vacant land located at thirty four, thirty six Catherine from, from the previous, previously advertised properties list for the amount of $11,300. The purchaser plans to construct a single-family dwelling on this property within one year from the date of closing. It is recommended that the council approve the sale subject to the conditions set forth in the proposed resolution pertaining to this transaction. It is also recommended that the mayor be authorized to execute deed on behalf of the city conveying the title to Al Hamda Holding LLC, subject to review and approval by Corporation Council with immediate effect. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing seen none, unanimous roll be attached, next item, please.
Item twenty four, resolution by council members Abraham and Harris authorizing to sell the city-owned property located at three, six, one, two Gertrude to Al Hamda Holdings LLC for the amount of $11,100 for the purpose of new construction, subject to certain stipulations, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, and this is the same purchaser, Al Hamda Holding LLC submitted a bid to purchase the vacant lot located at thirty six, twelve Gertrude from the previously advertised properties list for $11,100 and plans to construct a single-family dwelling on the property within one year from the date of closing. It's recommended that the council approve the sale subject to all the conditions set forth. It's also recommended that the mayor be authorized to execute the deed on behalf of the city conveying the land to Al Hamda Holding LLC, subject to review and approval by the Corporation Council with immediate effect. Any questions or concerns on this item?
Council President?
Yes, Mayor.
May I just ask that you speak louder? I know some, some residents were just asking that you speak louder. I think you start high, then you come low?
Oh, myself?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize.
We do have, just for the audience, we do have the mics.
Yeah, just turn off, I just turned off. It's a touch mic, so I apologize. I will see if we can move it closer, and I'll do my best to speak louder, I appreciate it. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing seen none, unanimous roll be attached, next item, please.
Item twenty five, resolution by council members Burns and Hamud approving the request of Saleem Al Rayashi to assign his interest in the vacant land at three, one, six, five Walnut to Walnut Dearborn Property LLC, subject to certain stipulations and requesting immediate effect.
All right, the property owner of thirty one, sixty five Walnut on March fourteenth of this year submitted a letter requesting the transfer of vacant land out of the, that he purchased from his, from the city to his newly-formed LLC Walnut LLC, Walnut Dearborn Property LLC for liability purposes. It is also recommended that the property owner be required to pay for all documentation preparation and recording fees associated with this transfer of the property to Walnut Dearborn Property LLC. All other terms and conditions contained in the purchase agreement and council resolutions, including all deadlines imposed, shall remain in full force and effect, and is requesting immediate effect. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing seen none, unanimous roll be attached, next item, please.
Item twenty six, resolution by council members Burns and Herrick denying the request of the Yemen American Benevolent Association for a five-year extension of time in which to complete construction or expansion of the current operation at two, one, two, one Salina, also authorizing that the city exercise its right to repurchase the lots in accordance with the purchase agreement in council resolution eight dash four, five, five dash one, six, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, thank you. Council approved the Yemen, approved the Yemeni American Benefable Association, which is YABBA, request to purchase six plotted city-owned lots adjacent to the YABBA facility located at twenty one, twenty one Salina for expansion for its current operation, and the closing took place on December fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. The council resolution approved the sale, requiring, approving of the sale required YABBA to, to combine the lots with its adjacent lots, seeking rezoning of the lots from RD to OS within one year of closing, and to complete the construction within five years from the date of closing, which would have been December fourteenth, twenty twenty one. The city retained the right to repurchase the property of the original sale date, for the original sale price of $36,000 less ten percent and less costs associated with the transfer back to the city if its city, if the city conditions were not met. Two certified letters were sent to YABBA advising them that the request for extension must be submitted to the council within forty-five days before the construction deadline. The department did not receive any communications from YABBA in response to the letters. These lots were compiled at closing, however, YABBA has not sought rezoning for the lots and has not submitted plans for the project, and has not been approved for permits, and has not yet commenced any construction whatsoever. On March sixteenth, twenty twenty two, YABBA requested a five-year extension of the deadline in which to complete the construction. It is recommended that, recommended by Corporation Council that the city council deny the request of YABBA for the, YABBA's five-year extension for the time in which to complete the project. It is also recommended that the city exercise its right to repurchase the lots in accordance with the purchase agreement in the council resolution, eight, resolution eight dash four, five, five dash one, six, with immediate effect. Any questions or comments on this item?
I can speak to it if I may, Council President.
Yes, Mayor.
So I had conversations with the president of YABBA, Ali, Ali Balaid, and in my conversation with them, we indicated prior to the council meeting that we would not be recommending the renewal. He understood. We have a meeting coming up about how we can repurpose those lots for public utilization, public parks, something that we've submitted in one of the project proposals to Wayne County. Additionally, there's been conversation about where we locate a splash pad, and so on Friday, we met with the Concerned Residents of South Dearborn, which is the neighborhood association for the residents of South, of the South End, and they indicated they would prefer the splash pad at the CSX owned lots, and so we're pursuing that conversation separately to see if that is feasible based on soil testing and if we're able to build a splash pad in that area. And so we are having both conversations, so council is aware and making sure that we're including the community's input as we move forward.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, this thing shut off. All right, hearing and seeing no other comments or questions on this item, unanimous roll be attached, next item, please.
Item twenty seven, resolution by council members Burns and Herrick approving the request of Norris Athkur, owner of four, four, two Francesco Court, to install property line fence between four, four, two Francesco Court and the adjacent city-owned lots located at three, six, one, five Westwood and three, six, two, five Westwood, subject to certain stipulations.
The city owns the lots at thirty six, fifteen Westwood and thirty six, twenty five Westwood along the shared easement property line of four, four, two Francesco Court. The property owner wishes to remove the existing chain link fence and install a five-foot semi-private fence with a one-foot lattice top along the property line for the distance of approximately 107 linear feet. The proposed fence complies with city, the city fence ordinance and does not require any variances. However, the consent of the adjacent property owner of the location and the style of fence is required here, that is us, the city. The EDC, EDC Department recommends that the city, the city consent to the installation of the property, on the property, I'm sorry, consents to the installation of the fence on the property line, provided the owner pays for all costs associated with installation and removal of the existing chain, chain link fence. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilman Hamud?
You want to go first?
Yes, thanks. Just really quick, it says, is shown on the attached plot plan, but there was no plot plan attached to our documents.
Yeah.
So this is along Crowley Park? Is that right?
This is on Westwood. So the city owns a property and the homeowner is trying to put up a fence, or, you know, we're just trying to give them permission to do so?
Good evening, right, Council President, Council. Yes, the city owns the adjacent lot to this property owner, Westwood is right next to the Crowley Park. I'm sorry, the plot plan was not with it, it was intended to be sent with it, but it is an approvable style, it's the approvable height, it's in the approvable location. Any other, any other placement, you know, we would have just issued it, but adjacent to a city lot, we have to come for permission, that's all.
Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, so actually, this might be a good question for you, Director Hawkins, which, or the mayor. I know we talked before, previously about revising the fence ordinance, is that something that you guys still have on the books?
So I can speak to that. So we are undergoing a revision of the fence ordinance right now, and once we have something more concrete, we'll bring it before council to have the conversation.
Yeah, because I know that was always a big concern for a lot of residents, when, I'm sure Mr. Swafi also knows, you know, it's, it's one of the biggest complaints you hear while not that, and sinkholes, I think, are very big ones that we really need to address as soon as possible, so appreciate your expedient work on that.
I apologize for not getting it sooner, we have been a little reoccupied, I, I'm sorry.
What, the twenty five, the big budget?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Any other comments or questions on this item? Okay, hearing none, unanimous roll be attached, next item, please.
Item twenty eight, resolution by council members Burns and Herrick authorizing the use and closure of West Village Drive between Mason and Monroe Street for the West Dearborn Downtown Development Authority events and placemaking activities for the twenty twenty two season from June third, twenty twenty two through October thirty first, twenty twenty two, for the weekly farmers and artisans market, movies at Wagner Park, Friday nights entertainment, and pumpkin carving day trick-or-treat, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, the WDDA will host summer events at the Wagner Park and West Village Drive between Mason Street and Monroe Streets this summer. The WDDA is requesting the closure of, closure and use of the West Village Drive in the West DDA for the summer events and placemaking activities from June third to October thirtieth. The DDA plans to host following events during the summer twenty twenty two and the fall season. The Dearborns, the Dearborn Farmers and Artisan Market will begin Friday, June third through September thirtieth, and that runs from two to seven PM. Movies at Wagner Park on Friday, June tenth, July twenty ninth, August twelfth, and September ninth, from dusk to ten PM. And Friday nights entertainment on Fridays, of course, June twenty fourth, July twenty second, and August twenty sixth, from six PM to ten PM. Also, they have the downtown pumpkin carving day, which is also a trick-or-treating on Saturday, October twenty ninth, from ten AM till six PM, and street closures requested includes the West Village Drive between Mason and Monroe Streets on Friday mornings from June third, Septem, to September thirtieth, from eleven AM to eleven PM. Monroe Street between Michigan Avenue to the south side of West Village Drive and West Village Drive from Mason to west of Oakwood Boulevard would, on Friday, on Friday, June twenty fourth, July twenty second, and August twenty sixth, from eight AM to Sunday at eight PM. And West Village Drive on Mason Road to, on Saturday, from October twenty ninth, from eight AM to six PM, and is requesting immediate effect. Any questions or comments on this item?
Council President.
Councilman Hamud?
I believe during the committee of the whole, I don't know if I have phrases as a formal request, but I wanted some effectiveness numbers, or attendance numbers relative to budget for some of these items. I don't see anything additional in here, so I don't know if, what happened with that.
Good evening, and yes, I did send that over today, but it came in pretty late in the day, so I do apologize for that. But I, pardon me, I'll get on my glasses for a second. But I did just pull together some of the numbers for you, as well as, there was a few other questions that I included in the memo, so hopefully you'll have that for, for yourself tomorrow morning. But we generally have for those, for a few of those events, the farmers market, Friday nights, kids' days, and movies in the park, were usually over thirty, thirty-five thousand people that come in for the events for the summer period. And I did not include the trick-or-treat numbers in there, that has fluctuated, but that has greatly grown over the years with well over a thousand people coming out for, for that event day. Local business sales, what we've estimated, and for the farmers market, we had a few years ago, MIFMA, which is the Michigan Farmers Market Association, come out and do a rapid assessment, and based upon their calculations, the market would bring in local business sales of 250,000 for the season, and then Friday nights is estimated at about 600,000 for the season, and then kids' days and movies in the park around 70,000 for the season. And that is based upon, you know, generally you have families that will be coming in for the festivities, but also going out and dining, or going out and grabbing desserts. So you know that they're doing more than just one thing in terms of coming out for an event on those evenings. So hopefully those were some of the numbers that you were looking for, I didn't include a little bit more.
I'm going to need one more column here that says cost next to each of these for the West Dearborn.
For the events themselves?
Yeah.
Sure. Yep, I can update that and send that over.
Yeah, so I think then, you know, figure out the effectiveness of, of each of the events, because I mean, I'm just curious for the most part, but I mean, I think that's something that we should be evaluating from our, what do you call it, commissions?
Right.
Development authorities?
Right, it's the West Downtown Development Authority, but we did also ask for our Corporation Council, which did send a memo over regarding outlining their responsibility of the city council and our role, and Mr. Romer, as you indicated it, that we are the budget appropriation aspect to it. So even though they have their own funding mechanism, we have to approve their budget, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, then, yeah, then it's really, then it's extra important then, that we understand.
It's grounded, it's valid and grounded, and I apologize if that wasn't communicated properly for the timeframe, but the council always requests the information that was requested at the COW to be received, no later than four PM on Monday.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so no, I understand that you didn't know that, but just for the future, so we could have that information to go forward. So I appreciate it, and we look forward to a great summer and fall.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Harris?
If I could just very briefly, and thank you, Christina, for being in front of us and supplying some information, but I'd like for people to be aware in the audience and at home, that if you go down downtowndearborn.org, take a look at the website, there is an awful lot of information there, especially when you have your meetings with, jointly with both the DDAs, there's an awful lot of information, and they're including expenditures and what you're expecting from the future, metro mode, you know, there's all sorts of. from the future, metro mode, you know, there's all sorts of metrics that are in there. So I mean, you guys do a good job on that.
Well, thank you. And yes, you know, state law requires via Public Act fifty-seven that we do our annual reporting of our statistics, as well as our budgets. So all that information is on the website for people to view, as well as, you know, at our monthly meetings, we do go over our financial reports. So those are posted every single month in terms of our financial reports, which you can find on the website. And regarding our events, we do a internal analysis with our promotions committee, which then brings it to our Board of Directors to evaluate and set the schedule for the following year. And we usually do that in August in order to set the following year's schedule. So we do evaluate all those statistics and numbers because it is important to us as well. And we are still, you know, working on many more ways to collect more data, too, and expand how we're looking at our, not only our events, but some of the other promotions and programs that we offer.
Thank you. And then Mr. Romer also as well. I'm sorry, Mr. Romer? Yeah, I apologize. We have some mic difficulties up here. This is the first council meeting with new microphones, so there's been a couple of challenges. Also regarding the makeup of the DDA, is there a council appointee on the DDA, on the West DDA?
A council appointee?
Council appointee.
Council confirms the appointees.
I understand that, Mayor, but in some aspects, we have council, we do have an appointed authority. I do not believe we have one on the West DDA or East DDA. I just wanted to make sure that was.
I don't believe so.
Right.
Yeah, and I can also follow up with the state law. It's regulated through state law, so I can follow up with the council on it, but I don't believe you do.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure so we understand that. We do always confirm almost most of the appointments, not all of them according to our charter. But regarding the DDAs, we do not have an appointee like we do on the pension boards and so on that are appointed out from the council. We do appreciate it. Councilwoman Herrick?
I'm going to, whoops. Turn that back on. I'm going to speak loudly because we're having microphone issues right here. I know that, well, we talked a little bit about this at the Cow on Thursday, but I wanted to bring it up again. Several residents have expressed concern about the safety of crossing from the parking lots and in particular the parking decks in West Dearborn, both the east and west parking decks there. I think some of the paint needs to be redone in the area that you're talking about where we close it to have the activities. But as well, it's, I think, unclear, especially to new visitors, where it's safe to cross from the parking decks to dine or whatever they're going to do on the other side of the street there. I don't know if there's something that needs to be repainted or if we need to even look at maybe doing something a little differently to make it more clear, especially, well, I think especially the west or the west deck, where people tend to cross wherever to get to the other side of the street. But I think it warrants conversation.
Pardon me? Down by West Village Commons, yes. And I know there have been improvements in previous years in terms of curb cuts for access for pedestrians that hadn't been there before in the past. But yes, pavement markings are a big thing, and we do need to invest more in having those done consistently and looked at overall throughout the district, not only in the West Downtown, but East Downtown as well and throughout the city. Pavement markings at any pedestrian crossing is an important safety factor.
Well, thank you. I do appreciate that, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Yes, but do we have any plan on that? Because to me, that's a safety issue. And that, I know, Mayor, that, I think you do sit on the board now, right? You sit as a member of the West DDA. But for me, I think that's a very crucial point. I mean, safety, health and safety of our residents is forefront, and I don't know what it would take. I know that I had some complaints regarding the garbage issue that was resolved with the DPW aspect, getting overflowing garbage in the area as well. But what is your timeframe on that? Because if we have to abate that or do it ourselves, I mean, we got to treat you just like all the residents, right? I mean, if something was happening where we have a violation or an aspect where you don't have a clearly marked cross rock and there could be an incident, you know, that is puts the city on liability. So do you have a plan on when that's going to be executed?
I don't have a timeline on that, but I can tell you that we would also need to work with the engineering department in order to fulfill that. That is generally what ECD would do, is work with the engineering department and/or the parking committee, depending on locations of those issues and items. And one thing that I can say is that we are currently working on a plan that is multimodal markings, so that would include those items. And we're working on that right now. So our goal is to try to get that out to bid by June, but I cannot guarantee you as to when that installation would actually be.
Just one second, Councilwoman. No, I understand, and I appreciate the plan for June going forward on additional, but we're talking about a safety issue now. And if you're aware that you need to work with the engineering department, have you submitted anything with engineering so far?
We have discussed it. I know that engineering has been going through a number of changes. So I think that now that Jordan Torrey has also started, this is a good week for us to really reconnect on a number of projects that we are looking at have happened in the downtowns.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you have the notice that the council is very concerned regarding the markings in the street.
Absolutely.
That brought up by Councilwoman Herrick, and Councilman Hamud regarding this as well. So I also think that the economic development director that has just been employed by the city, we also have our DPW director, Tim Hawkins. So I would strongly urge that you send some type of communication documented that you're requesting this, because we cannot have an incident happen, and it's that bad right now. We want to make sure to take care of it.
Sure, absolutely.
Appreciate it. Councilman Hamud, did you have anything to follow up?
Yeah, I just wanted, maybe this is a question for legal or maybe Director Hawkins, because he's been through this, but in a DDA, wouldn't that also involve planning?
So what, I'm not sure what we're talking about for reinvigorating the crosswalks, but I can tell you that.
The stripe, we're talking about.
Well, there's two issues.
First, we want to stripe them. What they want to do with the plan is a plan that they have with the DDA, and that's between them and the board. We're talking about a safety issue.
Yes, if the DDA reaches out to us, the mayor has asked me to investigate re-striping some of our lots and surrounding areas for some parking issues around that area. So since the mayor's already asked for this, I'm working on that currently. If the DDA reaches out, I can kind of tie them together and possibly get the same striper to repair the pieces that are already there. And planning would be involved if we're going to, planning and engineering, or changing the way we cross the street.
Right, so I think that was my question, is if we're going to add additional crosswalks, which I think is what we're saying, which I agree, because I mean, I go to that area all the time, and I find myself oftentimes crossing the street in a straight line toward West Village Commons, because both the parking structures are both on a diagonal. So it doesn't, it's not very pedestrian functional. I mean, it's the same thing if you go to the eastern structure that's at Wagner Place, there's an exit from the parking structure that does not have a crosswalk right in front of it. You have to either go to the light on the other side, or you have to walk west toward the crosswalk that's in the middle of the parking structure. So there are a couple of considerations on crosswalks that I think, I don't know if that's handled internally in the DDA, or if you guys work with planning to do that stuff.
Normally, we work with, within the parking committee, we have been working on that with planning, with ECD, but then also with engineering and connecting with engineering and DPW. So it's really, I mean, it is involving everybody at the table to make sure that we're, you know, we're looking at the roads, we're looking at the sidewalks as to what's the most functionality of it. We also have to work with Police Department in terms of parking enforcement and deliveries in those areas, too, because we've had some issues with some delivery trucks in those areas.
All right, yeah. We want to see progress. That's all it is.
Yep.
Thank you.
First of all, ma'am, thank you so much for coming up here and allowing us to ask you questions. And I know you have a lot of things on your plate, but safety is a number-one priority. We all have a lot of things on our plate, everybody in the city does, but safety needs to be a number-one priority. So I think it's a good opportunity to come back to us with some communication on when this is going to be done, as well as looking at other opportunities within the downtown area where we can improve safety as well for our residents.
Be happy to provide.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And yeah, our clerk is our record keeper, so that is a referral request so that we get communication back on regarding the timing on that. So we'll send over. Thank you so much.
Okay, yeah, you're welcome.
Appreciate it. Hearing and seeing no other questions or comments on this item. Unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item twenty-nine, resolution by council members Paris and Burns approving the request of Green Brain Comics to conduct the Green Brain Free Comic Book Day event in the city-owned alley located north of Michigan Avenue between Middlesex and Horner Streets from eight P.M. on Friday, May sixth, 2022, to twelve P.M. on Sunday, May eighth, 2022, also granting permission to erect a non-staked twenty-by-forty-foot tent in the city-owned alley and have six barricades delivered and picked up from DPW to Green Brain Comic Book Store, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you. The Green Brain Free Comic Day, Karmic Day Book is an open house event that features free comics, local creative creators, writers, and workshops, and children's crafts and craft tables as well. This event will be held in conjunction with over two thousand Green Brain comic book shops worldwide in all fifty states. It's estimated that three-point-three million comic books will be given out on this day. Green Brain Comics will host its, their twenty-first Annual Free Comic Book Day event and is requiring council approval for temporary road closures and the use of the city-owned alley. Green Brain Comic respectfully requests the council to approve the closure of the city-owned alley a half-block west of north of Michigan Avenue between Middlesex and Horner Streets from eight P.M. on Friday, May sixth, to approximately twelve P.M. on Saturday, May eighth, 2022, and permission to erect and stake a twenty-by-forty-inch tent on the city-owned alley, six barricades delivered and picked up by DPW to Green Brain Comic Store, and is requesting immediate effect. We have any comments or questions on this item?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, respected members of this fine council. My name is Dan Merritt. I'm co-owner of Green Brain Comics, one-three-nine-three-six, Michigan Avenue. I appreciate you hearing our request this year.
Yeah, well, I can tell you for me, as you know, I've been to your event with my younger son. He's taller than me now, so I don't know. I'm sure there's books that will happen, and I also did a CD TV show with a comic writer over there as well. So I think it's a great event. I really commend you for continuing to do this work, and I see there's a lot of people that do attend it. All of our members should take a ride over there and see what he does. It's a great event, and it's consistently being done and done very well. You have a great operation. We really appreciate it and wish you all the success.
Thank you. And yes, I would like to reinforce that invite to all the council members and Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilman Housewaffey?
Yes, you might not know this, but I do, I'm your neighbor, actually live right around the corner, and it's an event that I see every year, and I really appreciate you having such an event in our city. And I'm glad to be in a position where I can support it now.
Thank you.
Excellent. Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you for being here, Dan. I just wanted to commend you and your lovely wife on your longevity as a small business-owning family here in Dearborn. Green Brain Comics obviously brings people from around the region because it's unique in what you sell there, and that you also give artists and writers a great opportunity when they come to your location and do their signings and then talk about what they're doing. But I also wanted to thank you for your service on the East Dearborn DDA. He's the former chair of the East Dearborn DDA, so he and his family have long given much of their time and talents to serving the Dearborn community, so thank you.
Thank you. It was my honor and privilege to serve on that board.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other councilwoman?
Yeah, so I mean, actually, you slipped down the block from there. That's where I grew up. But and I remember, I realized that you are within the bounds of the East Dearborn DDA where you are, so I was just wondering, is the East Dearborn DDA involved in this event at all?
In the past, they have been. We have also used them for sponsor funds. This year, we have been kind of under the gun with a lot of scheduling issues. We're still cleaning up the business after the flooding last summer. So we expect this event to shine as brightly as it has in the past, but it's a little bit smaller scale this year.
Yeah, so I guess I wonder on the part of the city, or, I mean, isn't the, the East Dearborn DDA is run by the same company as the West Dearborn DDA, correct?
You have the same director.
Same director.
Different board.
Different board. Yeah, so are you the same director for the?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess, bring you back up. So did you know about this event, or was there any kind of?
Yeah, it was only within the last couple of weeks, and they had already inquired with the Recreation Department to make the submittal to council for the requesting of the closure area. And we have normally, as a board, have always supported it. You know, there wasn't a request to financially support it this year, but we do, we are financially supporting Green Brain Comics, though, this year with facade improvements, which we're very excited to see happen, as well as they're looking at reinvigorating, I guess, redoing their handicap lift to get them to, people to their lower level of their business, which will be vastly important to the growth of their business, but in order for all abilities to be able to get in and really enjoy everything that they offer in their business.
Yeah, because I mean, I saw we actually just approved a list of events for the West Dearborn DDA for the year, so I guess I'm kind of wondering why there isn't a list of events for the East Dearborn DDA?
Generally, the East DDA has events in City Hall Park that don't require street closures. And so we are able to do those without coming before council for approval of that, because we are just using City Hall Park. The East DDA will be holding its movies in the parks this year. However, the board has decided to not hold its music series for the summer and to kind of reevaluate what type of events they would like to hold in the future.
For this year?
For this year.
Oh, so I guess do we have a list of events that exists right now for the, for East Dearborn?
We do for, yes, for both. We do.
Okay, I guess if you could send that over.
Sure. Absolutely. Yes, yeah, absolutely. We'd love to have you, too.
Yeah, because I know the music events were actually very relatively popular, at least when I was younger. I remember, there was like a jazz festival that, that was like a huge deal, and I know a lot of the business owners used to get a lot of business from that, so I'm surprised.
And we haven't, you know, we have not held it for the last couple of years because of COVID.
Right.
And as the board was evaluating that this year, the decision was really to wait and continue to reevaluate what might be needed within the area. We have been exploring the multicultural musical additions that we could add to our music series. But, you know, at this time, I think that is something that the board felt more comfortable holding off until next year.
And I'll speak to this. I'm not going to leave you hanging.
Thank you.
So as it pertains to the jazz fest, the music festival, myself personally did not support it. As it pertains to the DDA, we expended about seventy thousand dollars or so to host that music series. But if you ask which local vendors were able to participate, there was no local vendor participation. Additionally, the event traditionally happened after hours, where the businesses located in the region were not able to access the patronage, so the patrons that typically came. Correct. And so, you know, from our perspective, if you're, you know, as a board member of the DDA, our thought process was if I'm utilizing DDA dollars for these local businesses, if I spend fifty, I want to make sure these businesses generate two hundred. And so we're taking a year to actually do surveys amongst local businesses to hopefully explore what they would like to see happening in their local area, to get them more engaged, to ensure that they have an opportunity to generate revenues, that the DDA dollars are going to better use.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Dan, thank you very much for all your work. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other comments or question on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached with immediate effect. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item thirty, resolution by council members Abraham and Herrick approving the request of the Friends for Animals of Metro Detroit for members of the Dearborn Exchange Club
and the FAMD to host a one-day street collection drive on Saturday, May 7th, or Saturday, May 14th, 2022, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, at nine locations within city limits to benefit the 17th Annual Mutsdruck Walk and Run, subject to review and approval from the necessary departments and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the Dearborn Exchange Club and the Friends of Animals for Metro Detroit are requesting permission to host a one-day street collection drive to benefit the 17th Annual Mutsdruck Walk and Run. The date requested for the street collection drive is either Saturday, May 7th, or Saturday, May 14th. The street collection drive will be between the hours of 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM with a three-hour shift in West Dearborn. There will be nine locations throughout the city for collections, and per the council request, the referral to legal department has cleared all requirements, and per the council request, the chief of police, and the request for police presence, the police chief has requested that the presence of the nine locations cannot be fulfilled at this time for staffing issues. Any questions or concerns on this item?
If I may, Council President?
Mayor?
In speaking with the police chief, it's been indicated that if we have voluntary off-duty police officers, there are some that will volunteer, will be present. What I have learned, and, and, and these instances where police officers are requested, we're actually paying police officers to stand at those intersections, and we pull them out of their traditional shift or neighborhood, and if it's happening on the weekends, we also pay time and a half or double time for those officers to stand and support the exchange clubs. I know it's, it's a positive. These are organizations that give back to the community, but from our perspective, with the, you know, with us trying to push back on the traffic enforcement, we, we thought in this case, some officers came forward to our police chief and insisted that they'd be able to volunteer in off-duty capacity to assist the Friends of Metro Detroit in this, in this time.
Okay, excellent. So we can leave that as, as, clerk, as you indicated for the resolution, we can indicate if off-duty, if off-duty volunteer police officers are available at the, at the direction of the police chief, that would be, that would be satisfactory to it.
So I guess one question?
Yeah, but also, chief, if you can come up, do they, are they going to have the, they're going to have the automobiles necessary?
Yeah, well, Council President, City Council, Chief of Police, absolutely. They'll have use of their uniforms or scout cars, their lights. I just, like Mayor succinctly stated, you know, having our officers there time and a half or with city tax dollars, when they need to be focused on traffic enforcement and other things is impossible, but I do have officers that are willing to volunteer their time, and so I think we'll be able to make this a success.
Okay, excellent. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And Councilman Hamud, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I guess my only question was if they're going to be there with their vehicles, if you have the necessary vehicle resources, you just have like spares?
We have full vehicles that we can use with lights that are functioning that'll serve both needs.
All right.
Councilman Al Suwafi, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Council President.
Yeah?
I'm glad to see this moving forward. I think we, the residents of Dearborn, have a unique relationship with the, with our police department. We know that we don't want our police officers just out there giving tickets and arrests and fighting crime, so seeing them in this capacity really makes me happy. But I know that maybe there's an opportunity for the reserves. Is that something that could be tapped into?
The reserves might be able to fill that function as well. I can see if they're available, but I'll have you know at this time, we're pulling them for the Sahur Festival, and we're pulling them for Ramadan at night at the Houses of Worship. So, I mean, we've got people all over the city serving a lot of functions at the moment.
Now, the reserves, are they paid?
No, they're, they're volunteers as well.
Okay, good.
Right. No, I appreciate it, and I just want to echo the sentence we did in, in the committee of the whole, and I know Mayor, with the council, is working with your administration to come up with a cohesive plan, because as you indicated, some nonprofits are paying for these services, some are not, and we need to come up with a cohesive strategy that's going to be consistent for everyone, because it is the taxpayer dollars.
I can tell you across the board, Council President, we're going to be consistent when it comes to these type of events, but I also want to add that we have a longstanding, very strong relationship with a lot of our, you know, organizations, whether it's the Optimists Club, the Exchange Club, Goodfellows, and I, and I assure you that I want to strengthen that relationship moving forward, so.
Thank you very much. Do you have any other questions?
I just have a comment, and I appreciate this going forward. I know the timing was not as perfect as we'd always like it to be, but I'm, I'm glad it's in front of us today, and I'm glad we're getting the cooperation from the administration and the police department. I was a little shocked when I saw the memo come out basically saying, "No, we're not going to participate." I know the mayor is developing a policy, but I, I'm a little perturbed, I guess, that this group was, you know, basically being the first group to be denied without a, a formal policy in place. I'd like to see that policy, and when that comes forward, I'd also like to see what events are being covered across the city so that it is equitable to everybody, because I know we use the officers, and I, and I fully support that the entire administration supports our community service groups. They give more back. The mayor, you just mentioned about multipliers giving back to the community. This is a case where with very little resources being dedicated from the city, the multiplier's huge of what these groups give back to the community. These are well-recognized groups. There's no question about their integrity or the purpose of the event. All the proceeds go back into supporting everyone in Dearborn and, and specific causes. So if we're going to have a policy, I would like to see the information to support that and how these resources are being deployed in this fiscal year right now, because I know they're being deployed to support lots of groups, and I encourage that. And I don't want to see us singling out a group and saying, "But not for you," because I think that's the opposite of the message that we, we're trying to send.
And I agree, Councilman. I think if I can just bring up the last few events that have come across our table, you know, even the Green Brain Comics, for example, requesting police assistance to block off the back parking lot, there's no charges that have been implemented in the resolution before you. The Friends for Metro, Friends of, Friends for Animals of Metro Detroit, in the current request, there was no charge that was being applied. If we look at the last events, the only one that was applied a charge was to the Sahur Festival. Nobody else was actually being charged for the police assistance that was being provided, and you can look back to as far as you like, that's how it's been, and so the, you know, there was.
Until today.
Well, correct, because, I mean, I think, you know, the council.
I mean, when we pivot on a policy, sorry to interrupt you, Mayor, but when we pivot on a policy without having a policy, that's frustrating.
Well, if I can, what I would add is there's been subjectivity to the policy being applied always, whether that was police presence without being charged, whether that was free of charge for the rental of our facilities at the For Performing Arts Center that was brought forward by one of the members in the audience. We've always had, there's always been a subjective policy in place, and therefore, in my eyes, that means there was no policy, from my understa, I mean, if it's a, if it's a individual determination as who's to, who gets it, who doesn't, that's not a policy.
Well, and the same subjectivity is here in front of us today deciding the other way.
Well, since I have come in, I have been very clear from the outset that we are trying to make sure that our costs are remaining neutral. And so whether it was the Sahur Festival, whether it was Friends for Animals Metro Detroit, whether it was whoever it was, I was saying, "I have no problem with utilizing our officers. Can you at least cover our costs?" And I've been very clear from that, from the very beginning.
But nobody else has been covering the costs up to this point.
Well, since I have come into office, we have been now pushing for the covering of costs in the last three months. And so if you look at the, the current event that has been approved, the Sahur Festival?
I know there's only, I know there's that one.
They're paying.
Which is a major event that is, is different than a community organization, a Dearborn community organization.
Okay. And then I guess, and as we clear out, as we flesh out the policy, the only thing I would ask also is if another Dearborn-based nonprofit came forward and they requested police presence, would we then say you can also get the police presence at no charge? There are, there's a plethora of Dearborn-based nonprofits that give back in a number of ways, and I think if we start.
And I would answer yes. If the resources are capable of supporting our community service groups, all of them, then, then that's what we should do.
So the only caveat I would add is when you talk about resources are capable, I can pull as many officers as you'd like out of neighborhoods and putting them at corners for any service organization. Just, that's what we're doing, and I want that to be very clear. And if it's happening on the weekends, it's time and a half.
Right. No, I, I appreciate that, Mayor. Councilman Hamud, if you're done?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, for me, I do not support that policy. I want to make it abundantly clear that I do not believe that we should be taking police officers out of neighborhoods. I think that in the last 90 days of the new administration, we have had numerous calls to our council office and to other members here on this body thanking the police presence and the amount of police that we have seen. I instituted a program on day one as the council president to, through an approval of the chief of police and the mayor, to have us do ride-alongs to see the day-to-day operations of the police, and I do not believe that their resources are good to stand at, at a sign to collect funds for sirens to bring attention for the Friends of Animals of Detroit. And, and I, I'd be honest with you, it's, I know the service clubs, I'm a big supporter of all of them, but as, as the councilman is well taken, that pivoting on policies, I think it's subjective at this time until something is gone forward, but I can say to have police being paid time and a half to stand at a street at nine locations to collect funds that are probably going to be less than the amount that we're paying them is a bad, bad waste of taxpayer dollars, and I do not support that type of policy.
If I could just add for one minute, I apologize.
Yes, chief.
You know, I think our officers recognize how much a lot of these service organizations do for the city and for the department, and so encouraging them to volunteer a little bit of their time to give back to the city. I, can you guys hear me or no?
Yes, mics.
You know?
Please try.
Fine.
Is the mic on?
So new mic, I apologize.
It looks green.
It's green.
All right, so, Council, if I could just add, you know, we, I think our police officers recognize how much the service organizations do for the police department and the city of Dearborn, and if I can encourage some of them to volunteer some of their time to give back to the city or these exchange clubs or service organizations that have given us so much, I don't think that's unreasonable. And Councilman Al Suwafi, thinking of the reserves, that's also an opportunity. So I'm not suggesting we don't provide them a level of service, I'm just looking at a different way to do it that's more efficient, so I can still serve the residents of Dearborn and not have to pay city tax dollars to do it.
Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Council President. Another way of looking at this, though, is what is actually needed? When you go ahead and compare this as an example, it's nine intersections that they're going to be collecting money, but there's only three intersections, from what I understand, that any police presence was requested, and when you can put either an explorer, an intern, or a reserve officer that are not paid employees at that particular time, the interns maybe, but just going for three hours for three different locations on a particular Saturday, it's not the same thing as when you have tens of thousands of people at an event where you might have life and death situations, or even an arrest, or crowd control, the potential for so many different things happening. So I would only suggest, it only makes sense that if we do develop some sort of a policy, it depends on what the event is and what the needs are and what the resources that need to be expended to make that event safe. So, you know, an event like this, and I appreciate that the police officers are coming forward because they're part of the community.
I agree.
And that's extremely important, you know, for the image of the community, being part of the community, so I commend you and the police department for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. And just, Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, I guess, to the point of some of my council members and, and the mayor, when it comes to, this was actually one of the first questions I, I asked when I got on, when I saw a lot of these events that we were authorizing for the city, which, which had to do with, you know, how much is the city paying to put on some of these events, and then why do we request money from some organizations and not others? And if, and if the intent of some of these events is fundraising, the bare minimum you can do in fundraising is to cover your costs. If your costs are not covered as part of your fundraising, then you need to rethink how you're doing your fundraiser, because it's, it's not that negative. If you, if you want, if you end up, if you can't make a profit on your fundraiser, then you're better off just requesting a grant from somebody, because then you shouldn't be holding a fundraiser. So I think when, when it comes to something like this, I think requesting, requesting an estimate of, of how much this is going to cost taxpayers is a, is a fairly reasonable ask, I think, if, if we're going to be committing city resources to it. And I, and as the mayor pointed out, the only event that we've been, that we've done so far this year and that we'd like to bring some consistency to as part of this new policy that's being worked on by the administration is, you know, a nonprofit rate, I think, is the, is the concept. So for police officers, so, and that's something that's probably going to have to involve pay rates with the unions and things like that, so, so, you know, how, how we're going to structure the actual deployment of officers and things like that, and that's just officers, never mind DPW. I mean, I know I saw Director Hawkins is always out there personally putting out the, not to be so nice to you this meeting, but really, like, it's, it's funny to me when it, when the director is out putting cones and barrels up, so.
True.
And that, but that's concerning to me, because that's, that's a use of city resources. That's why I'm wanting a city hall working on things. So, so it's, it's, so things like that, I mean, we really have to be super careful when it comes to, you know, we throw around the word equity, and there's, there's equity and there's also equality, right? So if we're going to be charging one organization, we should look at charging all. That's the idea, is, is you have to be consistent across the board. We have been subjective. That's what we've been doing prior, and it's, and it's nice to pick winners and losers because it, it makes us feel great as, as elected officials, but it's not always the, the right thing to do, and it's not always the, the equal thing to do to, to treat people all the same under the eyes of the law, because that's what we're doing also, is we're passing resolutions to our law. So I think that's, it's a good thing that we're trying to bring forward. It just sucks that in the meantime, right now, we're, we're in that gray space, so the sooner we can work some of that out, the better, I think, so, thank you.
I appreciate it. Just wanted to note also, so that everyone, all our residents do know that there are substantial fees regarding the Mutsdruck Walk and Run, and all of those have been waived. There's, it's a very, very large event. I've been to it, it's a five-year list event, and there's zero fees being charged for the Mutsdruck event. I just want to make that abundantly clear, because it is an extremely large event, there's a lot of things going around and a lot of, lot of different aspects to it, and there's no charge for any of that right now by this council, so I want to make sure that's noted for, for everybody to understand. So we do appreciate it, and I did not see in the memo where it said limited to three or locations. Yeah, it just indicates police cars available to draw attention.
Correct.
So, I mean, whatever you deem is necessary, the volunteer aspect, the ordinance of the resolution, we'll give you the authority to do that, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Council.
We're sending the best. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item?
I have a question.
Councilman Harris?
Did they, did they determine which date they wanted to do this?
No, they didn't have the date either. They had two different, if you'd like to come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, they, they submitted that.
It's been changed?
Okay. It was confirmed to the legal department.
Okay, well, no, that's okay, if you'd like to come up, yeah, we'd like to get the information, because clerk, did you receive that? It's not in our background.
I don't, I don't agree.
So you didn't receive it?
No.
Okay, because it says on here 7th or 14th?
It, it, well, I'm Kim Cross. I am president and CEO of Friends for Animals of Metro Detroit, and we did decide on the 14th.
Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, I appreciate that. So you did communicate that to the legal department?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, can you make an amendment to that change to indicate Saturday, the 14th? Who, do we have to have, that was offered and supported by?
Yeah.
Yeah. Councilman Abraham and Councilman Herrick, do you have any objection to putting that in their resolution?
No objection.
No objection?
No.
Okay. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, you have that noted?
I do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or concerns on this item?
I guess, just two points that I forgot to mention.
One was the, Councilman Hamud?
Yeah. One was Councilman Harris. In the memo from the police department, they said that they can't send out interns without the supervision of sworn officers, I believe, right?
That was my understanding as well, too.
Yeah, we're going to ask one officer volunteering.
Yeah, no, I meant like just in general, I think that was one of the things that Yeah, no, I meant, like, just in general, I think that was one of the things that we heard. And then the other thing was, the Suhur Festival is put on by a nonprofit, which was a point to Councilman Abraham. He said, well, this is a nonprofit.
I said Dearborn nonprofit.
It's, so, is the Suhur Festival Dearborn nonprofit?
It's associated with the Amity Foundation.
Amity Foundation.
Amity Foundation's a Dearborn nonprofit.
Amity Foundation's on Telegraph.
Yeah, Telegraph, yeah.
Yeah, but are they the actual-
They are the recipient of all of the money.
Not the recipient, that's totally different, the recipient and the operator.
The operator is also a Dearborn resident and a Dearborn business owner.
Okay.
So, I just-
I wasn't aware that the organization was located in Dearborn that's actually hosting the event.
Yes, so it is a Dearborn-based event in Dearborn, by Dearborn people, attended by Dearborn people.
I don't want to turn this into a debate, I wish we had a policy, I wish it was objective. We just, two weeks ago, passed the same resolution for the Mutsra Walk for the same organization, and nobody had any objections. Now we're asking for the same organization for a second event, and all of a sudden, the tables have turned over.
I would like to clarify that, if I may, Counselman.
Yes, Counsel.
When the Mutsra approval came forward, I did emphasize that there were no permitting fees that were issued at that event to any of the Friends of Metro Detroit.
Correct.
Similar event, and the Suhur Festival is the only thing that happened, similar event happened, all vendors went through a background check, all vendors did a vendor permitting fee, all vendors had to accommodate through every single licensure and inspection through Wayne County Public Health Department, as well as the City of Dearborn. None of those specifications were put on place before the Friends of Metro Detroit. So yes, it's been very subjective.
I agree.
And I don't think that's fair.
And I don't think it's fair to compare a local fundraising event on a street corner to an event that's attracting tens of thousands of people, and say, we're just going to let it go. There's a lot more resources going into the festival, going on for Ramadan on the weekends than-
Correct.
What we're talking about here. I mean, this is not dissimilar to the Goodfellows collecting for the holiday season on the corners and handing out newspapers, Kiwanis, I believe, hands out peanuts.
Absolutely.
This is, this is a well-established, local type of activity. To compare it to the production that's going on at Fairlane, I think is a disservice to the people out there.
What I'm not trying to compare, well, the Mutsra event attracts a few thousand people.
Yeah, and how much, in the first weekend, did the-
Fifty thousand.
Okay, so we can't compare two to fifty.
Well, I mean, I know, it's up for a longer conversation, but to Counselman Paris's point, I think at that point, we're going to have sixteen different types of events, and who gets charged depending on the volume of people that attend versus not the volume.
I just think we should be as insistent as possible until the policy is put in place, or at least recognize what's been done historically, until there's actually a new policy in place.
What I'll say is, it's administrative. It's not, it's not an ordinance on the books. I have the authority to determine if our department is going to charge for the services or not. That's not an ordinance that's in place that needs modification. I have that authority instilled, you know, within myself, as the mayor of the city who oversees all the departments. And I think it's fair to say, I mean, Aliana Hussein's here in the audience, she had a nonprofit event at the Port Performing Arts Center, she paid the nonprofit rate. We have requests that come in all the time, that want to take the Lincoln Ballroom or the theater, they get it for free. And so what do I tell her? She's a Dearborn-based nonprofit that's trying to improve mental health awareness in the City of Dearborn. Why doesn't she get it for free, but the others get it for free?
Yeah, absolutely.
That subjectivity happened before. As I have come in, I have kept the promises for those that were given assurances in the year prior, but since then, I have told every nonprofit, there's going to be a nonprofit rate, Parks and Recreation Department is creating it, because we're bleeding money as a city. That's just the fact. And I have no disrespect to any exchange clubs, I've stood on the corner every year for the last six years with the Goodfellows, no disrespect to anybody. But if I were to go out there and say, I'm paying eighty bucks an hour to every cop to stand at a street corner, and, you know, double that on a weekend, I think you're going to get a whole lot of different feedback. And I know I'm the first to actually bring forward that we're actually paying these cops, I did not know that till today. And I don't think that's a, that's a good use of resources, given all that we have going around throughout our neighborhoods. That's all I'm saying.
And I don't think we disagree, I'd just like to see the policy in place, so we don't have to have these debates every time up here.
Absolutely, we're working on it.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate it's noted, it's administrative aspect, so I do appreciate that. Any other questions or concern on this item? Okay, next item, please, Mr. Clerk.
We're going to move on to item thirty-three, but the clerk's office has withdrawn that item, so I'll move on to item thirty-four, which is a resolution by Council President Torini, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Marion Arthasca.
Thank you. Marion Arthasca was born on August twenty-second, nineteen twenty-nine, and passed away peacefully on April first, twenty twenty-two, at the age of ninety-two years old. She's a loving wife of the late George Tasca, and the beloved mother of Peter, Michelle, Jeffrey, and George. She's a cherished aunt of John, Rosemary, and Jerry. Marion was born in a small town in France, and as an infant, was sent to live with her grandparents in Romania. At the age of six, she returned to France, and by nineteen forty-seven, moved to the United States. In nineteen fifty-two, Marion married George Tasca, and the couple had four children, and spent fifty-six happy years together, until George passed away in two thousand eight. Marion lived on Amazon Street in Dearborn until two thousand and eighteen. She was an avid gardener, enjoyed spending countless hours devoted to maintaining a beautiful, beautiful upkeep property. Her efforts did not go unnoticed, as Marion was awarded several Standard of Excellence citations by the Dearborn City Beautiful Commission, which recognizes homeowners for their impeccable groomed landscapes. She also loved to collect and acquired several recipes for cooking and a collection throughout the years. She's also adored pets, and along with the rest of the Tasca family, was responsible for the rescue of many stray animals, cats and dogs alike. Marion used to say there was a bright porch light that only the animals could see and knew they could find a forever home on Amazon Street. Marion and her family were close friends of my family. They were neighbors to my parents when they first, in their first home, and were always willing to watch my sister, God rest her, and my brothers, whenever my parents needed. Whenever I had a chance to speak to her, she always called me Hamudi, a nickname that only my immediate family uses. Marion was great, will be greatly missed by her family, friends, and neighbors, and those who blessed, were blessed to know her. To all, we offer our sincere condolences. Unanimous roll will be attached. Thank you, next item.
Item thirty-five, resolution by Councilman Paris, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Robert William Drew.
Thank you. Robert Bob William Drew was born on June sixteenth, nineteen thirty-two, in Monroe, Michigan, to the late Edward and Mary Drew, and sadly passed away on March fifteenth, at the age of eighty-nine years old. Robert is survived by his three sons, John, Kathleen, Robert, Shirley, and Dean, Kathy. He was a proud grandfather of Angela, Tiffany, Scott, Ryan, Elizabeth, Michael, Sean, Carly, Rebecca, Daniel, and Joshua, and a great-grandfather to Sebastian, Grace Lynn, Jacob, and Annette. He was preceded in death by his devoted wife, Joanne, and grandson, Christopher. Upon graduation from high school, Bob enlisted in the military and proudly served as a paratrooper in the United States Army, earning a Medal for Service in Japan and returning home, he married the love of his life, Joanne Harazi, from Dearborn. They lived halfway together at the corner of Horga and Hemlock, where they raised their family. In nineteen seventy-eight, Bob was hired by the City of Dearborn as a laborer in the Recreation Department. Throughout his fifteen-plus years of employment with the city, he worked in various divisions, but finally ended up at the Housing Department, until his retirement in nineteen ninety-four. Bob enjoyed working with the community that he chose to raise his children in, even so, that he became the first of three generations in his family to work for the City of Dearborn. Bob embodied the qualities of being a friendly, hard-working, and diligent individual. After retirement, he spent most of his time keeping busy during yard work, woodworking, and restoring a classic Mustang. His favorite pastime was spending quality time with his family members. He cherished his family deeply, and held a special place in his heart for each of his grandchildren and great-grandchildren. We will forever be indebted to Bob for his positive impact and life's work he had in the city. Bob will be greatly missed by his family, friends, and neighbors, who were blessed to have known him. To all, we offer our deepest condolences.
Thank you, Counselman Harris, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item.
Yes, we have a walk-on item, item number thirty-six, resolution in need of offering support, requesting approval of additional dates to be added onto the Ramadan Suhur Festival.
Offered by Counselman Hamud, supported by Counselman Al Suwafi. You may continue.
Scheduled event held in the Fairlane Mall parking lot, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, thank you. The Ramadan Suhur Festival opening weekend received overwhelming success. Due to this reason, it's being requested that additional dates are approved. Fedora Holdings is now requesting the following additional dates received by council for their approval. It will be April fourteenth, April seventeenth, and May second, twenty twenty-two. The festival will continue operating in the hours of operation from eleven PM to three AM, and will receive the same conditions as previously approved by this body, and is requesting immediate effect. And we did have offer and support. Any questions or comments on this item? Eric?
I could-
Counselman Abraham? Yes, of course.
We just talked about this, and now it's, who is Fedora Holdings LLC?
Fedora Holdings is the, is the company that was here to speak on it, they are the-
So they're not a nonprofit?
No, it's, the nonprofit's in, it's in the fiscal impact aspect.
Correct.
Yeah.
But that was my point, it's not a nonprofit hosting the event.
The proceeds were going to a nonprofit.
It's not my question, I didn't ask where the proceeds are going.
I understand, you asked who were Fedora Holdings, I was just explaining to you.
I understand, but earlier, it was alluded to that it was a nonprofit in Dearborn, operating and hosting the event, and I'm just telling you clearly, it is not the operating company that is the nonprofit. I understand that they've pledged the proceeds from the event will support a nonprofit, but that is completely different legally than a nonprofit hosting the event. I just want to make that clear.
Yeah. Counselwoman Harris?
Also, I believe that it's not all the proceeds from the event, if I'm not mistaken, it was the dollar entry fee, which is significantly adding up, if we had forty-five thousand people that attended this last weekend, that's going to the Amity Foundation. But the organizers, I'm not sure that they're turning over all the profits, because they're charging the tent rentals and things like that, for the food and being sold, et cetera, so it is, it's a different model.
So if I may clarify, it's actually similar to like the homecoming model, where a business partners up with a nonprofit, and so you assume the costs, you cover your costs, and everything else is donated. That's how this organization works. And so if Fedora Holdings requests a fee for vendors to participate within the festival, he covers his costs for the insurance, to put up the tents, the generators, the fences, things of that nature, everything and access is donated. And so whether it's sponsorship dollars, and/or the dollar cover charge, or anything else that comes through through a raffle, which they also host, it's all donated.
Okay, I'm sorry, but to just clarify, since we're comparing it to, excuse me, homecoming, it is a bit different in that homecoming, any, any of the proceeds that came in from, like, the carnival, or any, any money that came into the city for, I'm trying to think, parking fees, all went back into the homecoming fund, because it was a city event. So there wasn't an entity making a profit, except for, you know, the people that sold the fireworks and did the fireworks, that kind of thing, but the nonprofits that were there were rent, were just the booth holders. And so that may be at the Suhur Festival as well, some of those booth holders, they're making profit, or they may have some nonprofits that are renting booths, but it's also a different model, to compare it as a, a little bit like apples to oranges, both large events, but different models.
Well, you have nonprofits that partner with for-profit food vendors, and they split, the for-profit food vendors cover their costs, and the nonprofits assume the excess. The carnival also takes a profit, the city just gets a percentage of that profit.
Correct.
But they also make money, in addition to the performers, plus all the things that we pay for to have it operating, so, I mean, it's not too far off.
Yeah, but all the, yeah, the proceeds all went back into homecoming, to making homecoming happen for the city. Anyway, okay, thank you.
Counselwoman Harris?
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to make mention, this kind of brings forward again about special events, you know, there is a special events ordinance, and, you know, setting up the protest areas for the city and what have you, but this gives an example, too. I want this event to be successful, and it has been. You know, so far, there's an awful lot of people that have shown up for this, and this is important to the community. There are a lot of events that are important to the community, whether it's homecoming in the past, or events like we've had, Art on the Avenue. The only thing that I'd like to see for this event that's before us is just some clarification, if we are going forward in this resolution, the first resolution for this event back, I believe it was in March, there were certain dates that were stipulated within the resolution, specifically the Friday and Saturday nights throughout the entire month, that the event would take place. And the only thing that I was a little bit concerned with, and it's working out fine, you know, this is a great event, I want this to be successful, but it was publicized that this event was going to take place Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, you know, for the four days, and that's not what the resolution stated, and that's what's before us tonight. So in other words, kind of putting the apple cart before what was taking place. Council never approved this, so, and it should come forward. What I would like to make sure that we go forward with events is to have some sort of stipulation in the resolution that make it very clear to anybody, especially with the large events, where we have a lot of resources within the city that may be impacted, and not just the police as an example for this, even though it's, we haven't had any problems, per se. I know there was an incident this past weekend, where some things happened, but none of any real serious nature, but it's potentially, there are problems, so we have to be able to plan for events, so if you have the date specific in a resolution, we can plan for that, and, you know, it's not a surprise coming before council, so I'm sure we're going to go forward with this event, I would assume, but, and nothing but success, but it does have an effect on city operations, city resources, and we as a council or an administration shouldn't be surprised by any changes, taking it for granted that something is going to happen, when in fact, it didn't come before council yet. Thank you.
If I may clarify, and then-
Yes, Mayor.
It's a great point about it being publicly announced, you can't control, unfortunately, folks on social media. However, next week, I think that there's one day that's going to be canceled, which is why they want to supplement the additional day this week, and then I think they were just taking advantage of the holiday weekend. Additionally, the May second date was given as a success, they wanted to add the May second date for their celebration of Eid. And then additionally, we have been communicating with the Police Department, they will be paying for the additional man-hours that are utilized on both Thursday, as well as double pay on Sunday, so all that's also going to be covered by the event hosts.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to make a comment, I did talk to my colleagues at Counselman Paris earlier today, I did see that posting, and I did call the event a hoster, organization, or a subsidiary, and did talk to them as well, I did talk to our legal counsel regarding as well, so I'm glad that they did correct that and bring it forward. We are, I do agree with Counselman Paris a hundred percent, and I do agree with the mayor's statements that you can't control all the social media aspect, but I do can say that I am very glad to see that a hotel next door, the Henry, was sold out, and there's people coming in from all over, so I really do appreciate it. And it is a work in progress, and I think they've done a very good job, but I did make it very clear to the event organizer that this must come before council to be corrected, and I did talk to our legal department, so I do agree with Counselman Paris, and I don't know how we can write it any clearer, because it did indicate the dates and listed the dates in there, but I'm sure we'll make sure we tighten up as much as we can, as you know, I'm a big proponent of ordinances being spelled out without having so much wiggle room, so I do appreciate that, and hopefully this will continue to be a success. Counselwoman Burns?
Thank you, Counsel President. Just to piggyback off of that, I know it's noted under fiscal impact in our backup, the anticipated boost to the local economy, and certainly, we're seeing that already with a sold-out hotel, we're seeing tens of thousands of people coming, which is wonderful. I think it would be great also to see, you know, once the Suhur Festival wraps up, I'd love to see just a, an overview of that local economic impact, in addition to attendance numbers, vendor numbers, all of those pieces. What are we seeing in kind of that ring that is around Fairlane, and potentially even further out? So I would love to see a workup on that, so that we can start to maybe use this event as a blueprint for this type of work moving forward, and how we can create kind of a rubric for success.
Thank you. Counselwoman Harris?
I just wanted to say thank you to the Police Department, the Fire Department, DPW, Public Works, for all the behind-the-scenes working with the organizers of the festival. It, there may have been a couple snags this last weekend, but it went off beautifully. We had forty-five, fifty thousand people over the weekend, are the numbers that we're seeing reported back. I went on Friday night and saw the police chief out there with his crew, and a lot of volunteers who are out there helping. Eleven PM to three AM is, is an odd time for a lot of people to be out and about, but it was, what was surprising to me was how kind of quiet it was at the time that I was there. There was some music going on, but it was mostly just people chatting, standing in long lines for food trucks, amazing variety of food and treats available, but for such a huge crowd, it was, it was pretty quiet, and very, very well organized, and people respecting each other, and just kind of enjoying the evening with, with friends and family, and a wonderful addition to the events that we have here in Dearborn. So I'm so glad that the organizers are being diligent, they're working things out as they go, obviously adding a couple days, but it's so nice that we're doing this here, so thank you to everybody that had a part in it.
Excellent, thank you, Counselwoman. Counselman Al Suwafi?
Thank you, Council President. You know, I'm excited to see an event come to Dearborn that's, that makes Dearborn a destination, so, you know, I'm really excited for that. I haven't made my way down to the event yet.
What?
I was out on training, and railing, I was enjoying my time, but this weekend, I'll be there for sure, and I'm looking forward to it.
Well, I can, thank you, Counselman. I can say for myself, as I've said before, I have a fifteen-year-old that can pretty much eat anything, and I did go there, and there's a lot of good food, I had a walking taco, excellent, and I'm trying to go around to other places, so there's a lot of varieties there. I got a, you know, I got a sweet spot for Doritos, so it was a great, a great event. And I'll tell you, I do agree with it, it was very organized, there was lines, but I, what I was pleased to see is that the three o'clock deadline, by three o'clock, there was nobody there. I mean, two o'clock, it was pretty much going down, so I thought it was really well-run, and it's great, everybody that could get a chance, go out, take a look at it, it's right at the Sears parking lot, and they got roped off, plenty of parking, no issues there. All right. Counselman?
Yeah, I just wonder if somebody ever takes the exit into Dearborn at, like, one in the morning, and sees all these people walking around, if they're driving, like,
I quote it, if they're driving like from Florida or something.
That's true. Who knows? It wasn't, it wasn't good. It was very, I think it was, it was constrained for you good as far as the size. Councilman Habou.
Yeah, so I, I've actually had the opportunity to go almost every day of the festival, because it's, it's a lot of fun. All of my friends are out there. I'm, I'm 27 years old, so-
Yeah, yeah.
This is, this is my, my people. And also, I'm a big foodie, so I am literally a kid in a candy store when I'm out there. So I've had an opportunity to try a lot of the vendors, and really, I think, the interesting thing about this food festival specifically is it's very entrepreneurial. So a lot of the businesses that pop up during Ramadan, and part of the reason why I think this festival is such a success is, is because of the centralization of a lot of the food stands and stuff like that that pop up only during the month of Ramadan. So, you know, honestly, this type of event, I think, I, I'd like to see it expanded, because there's, there's more business, there's a lot more businesses that people, and a lot of unique food ideas that people want to sell and want to have available to people, and that people would probably buy, because they're buying them out of their, out of stands in Dearborn Heights in their homes. And, and I think it's a, it's a really unique opportunity to showcase all of the different kind of culinary traditions and talents of our community, you know? Like, you, you find all kinds of very weird, unique things that you normally could never buy, like, like fluff stuff is like cotton candy with candy on it. It's just, it's just really weird stuff that, that just has no business-
He's hungry.
Yeah, that too. Yeah, also, it's Ramadan, and we haven't eaten yet, so.
Well, we, we appreciate that.
Yeah, and if any of the council people want to come, hit me up, and we can go together.
I'm gonna go this weekend.
Well, I appreciate that. Just, just to follow up again, I think the mayor, because remember that the whole premise of this aspect is that we were trying to stop the pop-ups and the unregulated aspects and the issues that we're having with places that were causing traffic issues. And, and I think it has succeeded. And I know that the administration has a zero tolerance of pop-ups in, in the area and consolidating it, which I think is a great idea, and I appreciate the mayor bringing this forward and bringing that group through to Dearborn. Any other final comments on this? Councilwoman Al-Swafi?
I just want to add, like I said, I'll be there this weekend, and I'm bringing CD TV with me. So I really appreciate the CD TV staff for being so accommodating.
We've got to feed them.
Can I come with you?
Yeah, you can come with me.
All right. Any other comments or questions on this item? Okay, unanimous rule will be attached, hearing no objections, so is attached. Next item, please.
There is no other items on the agenda. I'd just like to, if you wouldn't mind me taking a few seconds.
Yeah, Mr. Clerk, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to wish those of our Christian residents who are celebrating this week a very special and a very peaceful holy week, and a blessed Good Friday and Easter Sunday. So thank you for allowing me to say that.
Of course, absolutely. Anything, so the next we have anything from council? Before we go forward on the council, I'd just like to take a minute to congratulate Councilman Al-Swafi on his recognition from the Iraqi-American Human Rights Organization, who recognized his work during the COVID-19 and the pandemic aspect, and what he's done for humanity, especially the grants and what he's done for businesses to keep open. So I know that you were recognized by the group, and I did see it. I wanted to make sure that it was recognized by our city, and appreciate all your work during that time. It does mean a lot to the people, so.
Thank you, Council President. You know, for me, I was just doing my job. Thank you, Council President. For me, I was just doing my job. And so doing the right thing, and I didn't know anybody was looking. And I also want to recognize my colleagues who work with me at the county, who do such great work, and really went to supermold during the pandemic to help residents all over the counties, so.
All right, do appreciate it. Anything else from my colleagues? Councilwoman Paris.
Always having problems with these microphones.
It's okay, I got you.
One's gone here, this one's working that soundward. Okay, we'll get to it. We'll get it. I just wanted to echo Clark Durante and his comments that, you know, in recognition of this important religious time in our community, residents of two of our significant religions are fasting, they're praying, they're abstaining, and they're serving others. It's a time of spiritual discipline for two major religions. Lent is a six-week-long event in the Christian calendar that started on March 2nd. The official end of Lent is this coming Saturday, April 16th, day after Good Friday, the day before Easter Sunday. Eid al-Fitr starts on the evening of May 1st into May 2nd, and marks the end of Ramadan, the Muslim holy month of fasting that started on April 2nd of this year. So I want to recognize that for everybody that's partaking and obviously observing their religious faith. And I do have one other comment, Councilman.
Of course.
Real quickly. I just want to reach out, you know, every, every month is something to recognize organizations, recognize ethnicity, recognize so many different things. But one thing I definitely want to do, that kind of some unsung heroes that are in our community, I want to recognize National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. It's held Anulee, Anulee, speak it out, during the second week of April. And what it basically is, it's our dispatchers, police fire EMS dispatchers. You get on that phone and call them up, they are your lifeline. And you know what? They're in a position, they don't see what happens sometimes. You can only imagine being on the end of that line and understanding police officers are sometimes screaming for help, you as a victim of a crime, or maybe something physically that's going on with you. They don't know until the end, so you can only imagine what they're feeling. And I just have kind of a place in my heart, I understand their role, their function, and I just wanted to recognize that. So thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Any other, any other comments from my colleagues? Councilwoman Burns?
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to start by recognizing and thanking our DPW and Facilities Director, Tim Hawkins, and our fabulous new-ish, I think at this point, Deputy Director Nicole Golich, who has taken, I think most of us on council probably at this point, or in the coming weeks, on a tour of our DPW facilities. It's incredibly helpful as a body, I think, for us to see the spaces that our team and our employees occupy, so that we can do our best work in terms of supporting our team with the resources that they need. And I think appropriate facilities to work in and hopefully grow in as people and as professionals. So really appreciate that. Also wanted to recognize Nicole Golich. I know we've recognized her before in this space, but I think there were some special social media shout-outs for her this week as the first woman to serve as Deputy Director of DPW and Facilities. So huge congratulations to her. I know she's a gem for the city. Always happy to see all of our employees succeeding, but women, I think, as first in roles is something that's near and dear to my heart. So congratulations to her. And last but not least, in terms of staff recognition, I think our new Economic and Community Development Director, Jordan Towery, is here. Very glad we could snatch you away from Ferndale, very happy that you're here. Look forward to working with you and all great things to come. And also taco my colleagues, a very happy, blessed, and peaceful Easter weekend and Easter Sunday to all observing.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yep. Any other thing from my colleagues? Okay? I do appreciate all the comments, and it's a very good point Councilwoman Paris had brought up, so I do want to wish everybody a happy Easter. And it is, it is a great time, great time to reflect, so it does make a big difference. So hopefully, we have a peaceful run-through here. Any other comments from, nothing from the, nothing from the council, from the mayor?
Thank you, Council President. You know, concurring with obviously council and the clerk, obviously want to wish a very blessed conclusion to the holy month of Lent and the fasting. It's a lot of overlap of many religious occasions this month. And so a happy Easter, a happy Passover, and a happy Eid, because I don't think we're going to have another major council meeting before then as well. Second, we discussed, we touched on it earlier, Homecoming Festival. I think, I get this question often. We had the final meeting today. Homecoming is a go. And so we'll be back after two-year hiatus.
All right.
It'll be the first weekend of August, the 5th, the 6th, the 7th. However, it's going to be at a new location this year, just given the flooding at the Ford Field. And so we're actually moving it through the whole premise around the Ford Performing Arts Center. And so it'll actually be bigger than ever. And so we're expecting a whole, a mini of exciting announcements. The fireworks will still be on, the performers will still be on, the carnival will still be on, then a few extra additions we're able to pencil in. And so super excited that that's happening. If I can take the time, if I can have Jordan actually come up and introduce himself, so the community gets a, a chance to meet Jordan Towery. I have been counting the days down until Jordan Towery stopped assuming the role of two jobs. And let me just inform council and the public. You know, Jordan and I spoke at the beginning of the year, and he accepted the position. And he gave, you know, three months to his previous employer. In the interim, he gave us one to two days a week of voluntary time through those three months that he was here. And that's in person, that's not including all of the hours he gave us outside of that. And so it was very generous of him, not something that, that you'd find traditionally. But we're super excited to have you here. Maybe you can introduce yourself to council, one to two minutes about your background for the members as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Council President, council, everyone in the audience, thank you for having me here. I'm super thrilled, as the mayor said, to be having one job now and having that job be Team Dearborn. But that was, I'm very grateful to the entire city of Dearborn for allowing that transition. Ferndale made me what I am, and what made me attractive to join the team, and I wanted to do right by them. And if you've paid attention to Ferndale in the last just about six years, we've been through a lot, we've looked at a lot of similar things that Dearborn is looking at. I'm really, really excited about the vision that this community has, and this mayor has, and this council has for economic and community development in Dearborn. I am very excited that we are able to start consolidating the department, streamlining processes, making things, getting a path to yes, an easy yes, for projects that are trying to do something good for the community is something I'm very excited about. That's what we had in Ferndale, that's what we're going to have here in Dearborn. We have a great team already. Very, very excited, very grateful to be here. But yes, I spent six years, just about, it would have been six in August, had you all not come calling. But I've, I was there as the Community Economic Development Director at Ferndale. Prior to that, I ran the Eight Mile Boulevard Association, which was a consortium of communities from I-94 to I-75. So economic development, government collaboration, solving sticky problems, that's kind of been my bag. And I'm very excited to be able to do that with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jordan and I, yeah, we're definitely welcome. I really appreciate it on behalf of my colleagues as well. I do understand, because I have been talking to the mayor and the administration of you coming in on Fridays and helping get things organized. I do really appreciate that. I know that was something that you did not have to do, but we do appreciate that. And, and I do appreciate the fact that you did give your employer his, their due. But we, we are glad to have you finally here, because we keep saying, he's coming. And now you're here. So I know you got a lot of work to do, and find a lot of things going on and that you can fix, and we do appreciate it, and we do like to make sure that we can get to yes. And that is something that I think has been a struggle in the past. And I want to make sure that this council and ordinances that you need are going to be in, in, in the way that it needs to be for today's, today's economy and what the people want out there. So we do appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you. And thank you so much, Jordan. You know, Jordan was, it was a phone call with Jordan that led to the idea of bringing building, planning, and zoning all under one umbrella.
Excellent.
So secondly, Ali Abazid is also our Public Health Director. Today's his birthday, so he's not here. I didn't force him to come at his birthday, but he just started, we posted that as well. He came from the National Institute of Health in Washington DC, Dearbornite originally, and so we're happy to have him back home. And then lastly, if I can ask Mr. Patel to come to the front. Most of you know that we bid farewell to Ahmad Yunus Patel after 32 years and nine months.
Yes.
And we just wanted to acknowledge you and recognize you for your years of service and dedication. Someone who gives 33 years of their life to a city, it's not something that you come across often. And we are thankful. I think you became the most popular director, manager last year in the city of Dearborn.
That's true. Oh, my God.
But, you know, it's truly been, I know we only worked together for a short period of time, but it's been an honor, excited for you and your next chapter in your life. But just really want to take the time to recognize you and to thank you publicly before not only this council, but before all the residents whom you served, and you're a Dearborn resident yourself.
Yes.
So we might have lost you as an employee, but hopefully, we're not going to lose you as a resident, because then I'll, then I'll come knocking.
I'll be here.
Okay? All right.
Thank you, Eddie.
Excellent. Mayor, would you like to take a quick photo up here?
You guys want to stand?
Yeah, we'll stand with you. And then we'll make a couple comments for you.
Oh, sure.
All right.
Good coming.
Of course.
Come on, Troy.
Mr. Patel, I'll kick it off here. I just wanted to tell you, I, it was a pleasure working on my tenure with you. We had a great line of communication. And I think what really hit home for me during my time with you was that when I would talk to you, you'd say, you know, yeah, I know, and they told me, and I said, who's telling you? And you said, well, I'll, in the, I'll, in your own personal life, people know you're the city engineer.
Yes.
And where you, if you were out at the mosque, or out at the grocery store, or wherever you're at, you were getting the same questions and concerns we had, and you never shied away from them. I really appreciate it. I was able to visit your office here in the last week or two. And I really appreciate it, because you always made it simple for some of us that didn't understand the engineering aspect and could bring it to home to us. And I know that you were always a call away and found a way to make, to get to yes, when we found a citizen concern and how we can rectify it. So I really do appreciate it, and I want to thank the mayor for the citation and recognition of your 32 months and nine years.
32 years and nine months.
32 years and nine months. Anything else from my colleagues on this?
If I could, I just, I just want to echo those comments. I know Yunus, you and I have been around a long time, and we got a lot done along the way, and I'm going to miss you, and I know everybody here will miss you. You were as dedicated and as professional as they come. You never wavered from your vision, your standards, and you always delivered what you told us you were going to do when you were going to do it.
I tried.
And on behalf of the entire community, we thank you.
Thank you much. I appreciate giving me a chance, and I did my best, what I could. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
We expect 32 years out of the rest of the directors.
Mayor, anything else from your, from you and the administration?
Just in conclusion, to echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Paris, a recognition of our dispatchers, who often are the unsung heroes. It's a very difficult job.
Absolutely.
You know, I've had a tour of our dispatch center, and God bless them for what they do. And hopefully, you know, we'll continue to recognize them as we can.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Okay, this time, if there's anyone in the audience that's here to speak pertaining to city business, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Councilman Abraham, I apologize.
If we could, we have an elected official that's been waiting to speak in the back of the room, and I think we owe her the opportunity, if we could to-
[inaudible]
Yes, I understand. I'm asking the council president a question.
No, no, I appreciate it. Councilman Abraham, I, I did pause to look for an opportunity for them to come forward during the item that was questioned, at question, and I didn't see. But if you're ready to come forward now, please step forward, and we will take your comment.
And as I walked forward, I did come forward, you thought that item was not relevant to the-
Okay, that's good to know. Yeah, I appreciate that.
So good evening to this body and to the citizens of Dearborn. I am Cathy M. Garrett, the Wayne County Clerk, and I bring you greetings. I wanted to attend this meeting this evening to address a false narrative that is floating around, relevant to the translation of the ballots. I want to share with you a suggestion or two, and then share some information with you. First of all, I am not opposed to the ballots being translated, let's make that very clear. However, I do feel, and I jotted down, because I had a lot of time to sit there, however, However, I do feel, and I jotted down, because I had a lot of time to sit there, however, the Secretary of State's support for expanding the voting accessibility in the city of Dearborn, I agree with. However, it should have also been coupled with an established procedure or a pathway forward to implement this council's resolution. I believe the appearance of the Secretary of State gave the impression that the resolution was sufficient to implement a process from a local level that has historically been federally mandated. Now, let me share this with you. Currently, there isn't an established process or procedure for local jurisdictions requiring minority language assistance. Wayne County is under a contract with the voting system vendor to provide election programming and official ballots, ballots in English and Bengali, to implement another language requires. Contract modifications, thorough discovery from the voting system's vendor as to the timeline for implementing the programming, the testing, and then also there's an additional cost that is with that. What I want to suggest to you, the resolution that you sent, you need to revise your resolution stating the requested language and dialect. That resolution is to be submitted to the clerk, and in turn, that clerk submits it to the Wayne County Election Commission to vote on the resolution. Historically, and this was one of the things, historically, in the past, notification from the Director of the U.S. Census Bureau regarding minority language groups and the jurisdictions that fall within Section 203 of the Voting Rights Act was provided to the Secretary of State's office. The Secretary of State's office then would notify the county and local clerks of the requirements under the federal law to provide language assistance for those jurisdictions specified in the notice. Lastly, I would like to say for all the years that I have been the Wayne County Clerk, and I am honored and blessed, I have always and shall continue to govern the county clerk's office under the legal authority provided by the statutes and the laws of the state of Michigan. But I felt it was necessary that I came here uninvited, but to put on the record and to publicly say, I am not opposed to it, but it's not as simple as the Secretary of State coming here, you all presenting a resolution, and it happens. So I thank you for your time. Good night.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garrett. Appreciate your comments at the time. Stay for our meeting. Councilman Hamud?
So there were a couple of things that I'd like to address in that comment, actually. Luckily, I did have a look at some of the contract language between Dominion and the county. According to category, well, I don't know where we should start. So let's see. Category 12B7, EMS shall accommodate multiple languages. System shall allow local election officials the ability to download information from software used to translate information to the appropriate language, or system should perform translations automatically. Michigan presently uses English, Spanish, and Bengali. But if you review Category 12A13, it's clear that the requirements set forth at Dominion were to build the infrastructure for other non-English languages, specifically be able to, or let's see, be capable of supporting ballot layout and election configuration to multiple languages. So Dominion does have a variety of languages available. And I'd also, I guess I just have one question. You read the resolution that we passed, correct?
Absolutely.
So while it does quote the Voting Rights Act, which is something that I'm very, very passionate about personally, and I'm sure you are too.
I am as well.
Yeah.
For obvious reasons.
Right. Yeah, I know. So, I mean, for me, it was, the reason why we brought up, well, we as a council brought up the VRA was because it was the spirit of the VRA that we were trying to emulate. It was not to say that the federal government has implemented a mandate. So to say that the, you know, the census has to communicate this and that to the state, yeah, of course. If we were doing something that was within the scope of the VRA, then I would expect the census to get involved. But in this case, we're utilizing American Community Survey data of the city of Dearborn, which is publicly available and is not a mandate forced upon you from the federal government. It's something that the city of Dearborn is utilizing in measuring what kind of languages are needed to be available to our residents. So for example, currently, based on current American Community Survey data, we see that Arabic is a huge one for the city of Dearborn. I mean, what's the number? Do you remember? It was like 19% or something? Yeah. It's just an enormous language spoken at home, and English proficiency is not as high as it should be for an electorate of our size. But, you know, that's not, you know, we abolished literacy tests years ago, right? You have the right to vote if you are a citizen. And I believe that it's, you know, the council was trying to make it more accessible to people. So I don't really understand why federal VRA regulations are being pushed into this conversation, because they're kind of irrelevant, right?
Are you finished?
No, actually.
Okay.
We have a few other things here.
Okay. Let me, if I may, let me...
Yeah, if you'd like to address that point.
That's...
Let me?
Yes, maybe ask him to address it.
Let me say this to you first of all.
Yeah.
At no time did I say that Dominion did not have the ability to do that.
Okay.
What I did come here to say to you is that, number one, at this time, and the county clerk's office has reached out to the Secretary of State's office, there's been two conversations. Those conversations are simply about get a standard. What is the procedure? What is the process? Because this has the potential to start a precedence, to set a precedent. So the fact that there's not a procedure in place, that's why I'm here. I'm not here to debate the Voting Rights Act or any of that. I've said what I had to say, and all of that, that's fine. But I came to bring my issues forth of what my concern was, or is, I should say. So, I mean, and I'm not going to be rude. If you care to go on, you may go on, but...
I appreciate, I really don't want to. We did receive your letter as well, that you sent as well.
And my letter should have been self-explanatory.
Yeah, no, I think it was. And it was addressed by the Secretary of State as well. So we do appreciate your comments.
And so it's important to know that the county clerk's office has reached out to the Secretary of State's office, come up with a procedure and a process, and let's get it done. But we can't just willy-nilly do things without the processes being there.
And I think that's complete, that's great. And as an engineer myself, I completely respect processes. Now, it's my understanding that the Wayne, Wayne County already does translate ballots into another language inside of Wayne County. Is that correct?
For sample ballots.
No, for official ballots.
No.
In Bengali?
Bengali, and that's from a federal level.
Right. But the process to create a Bengali ballot...
That was, sir, that was a whole process that did not take, what is this, April? I believe your resolution was in March. So that definitely was not a turnaround in a matter of four or five months. And again, I'm not here to debate the issue with you. I've stated how I feel.
Of course.
I've stated that I am in support, so there's no need for us to go back and forth.
Yeah.
I didn't come here for that tonight.
Yeah.
God bless you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, for me, it's just a comment to our residents, just to clarify some things.
No, no, it's well taken. Councilman Harris?
I'd just like to thank Clerk Cathy Garrett, County Clerk Garrett, for coming and addressing the council tonight, and more importantly, to address the public, to share the information that was shared in a letter and correspondence, but the public hasn't necessarily seen that. I know it's been written about in our local paper a bit, but to hear it directly from you succinctly, as you presented it, is very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate it. So would you like to state your name and address for the record?
Yes. It's John Van Detten, 2211 Academy Avenue. And I am currently elected precinct delegate in number 46 in Dearborn. And I did go down to Cathy's, Garrett's office on April the 1st and filed my petition for my 43rd and 44th year to be precinct delegate in the city of Dearborn. When you brought this issue up last week, or the last city council meeting, I was in Minnesota, and I saw the results of your debate on television. I've also done my homework very extensively on Dominion. Right now, I'm not in the position to state some information and facts related to Dominion and this Dominion organization, related to Wayne County, in Detroit, Michigan, Allegheny County, in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, a couple counties in Wisconsin, Coe County in Atlanta, Georgia, and the whole state of Arizona. And I'm not in the position to go back and ask the city. Our elections were run 25, 30 years ago, when we got done with any election in the city of Dearborn at 8:00. It went to our central processor over on Green Street. Many of the people who I worked with now have passed away. And by 10:15, we had results, and everything was certified by the city clerk's office by quarter 11. And we had all the information. Nothing ever changed. I don't know exactly what's all going on with this organization, but I can tell you this right now, standing here after doing my work since I went down to the county clerk's office and asked a few questions, and I'm not going to bring those questions up, because I don't think this is the time. But the truth and the trust of our election system right now across this country with Dominion is an extremely very questionable period. The way they have conducted their businesses, who's owning the machinery, who's the third-party activity involved in the process, putting these clerks in the position that they are in, in a fighting position against the Secretary of State's, has gotten way out of hand and way out of truth and trust related to the voting integrity right now, that to the extent right now, over 50% of the people, especially independent voters right now, have not the confidence right now instilled upon them in our electoral process. Now, from the federal level, legislation can be initiated where the presidential candidates...
John, I'm sorry, your time is...
And just the House of Representatives and Senatories can be organized under their own separate period of time and can be under a unified factor in all 50 states.
Thank you, Mr. Benzick.
We have a very serious problem related to Dominion. Please, all of yous, get back to the historical aspect and how we processed our elections in the city of Dearborn. I can tell you this right now. Our clerk is doing a good job. It was second to none in the process. What we've got going right now, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered and taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Benzick. Please ask all the members to respect the three-minute time. And thank you, Mr. Benzick.
By the way, this is my position at the city clerk's office, and was filled out and ordered, and I had to take...
Mr. Benzick. Mr. Benzick, thank you. Please do not speak from the floor. Ann, would you like to state your name and address?
Jeff and Zaydan. Real quickly, the mics, if you need help to get money back, let me know.
We might need that.
Yeah, I will definitely take care of the customer service aspect in this place. Anyway, real quickly, I just came here tonight and wanted to ask you, if you were aware. I know that DT Energy has that, I don't know what it is, I think a generator over there by Donaldson and Nichols. It's sitting on Donaldson, and I know that it's there for something about, to keep the electricity going or something. So I'm just curious, is there any way that we can get that moved over to the Nichols side, over by the football field area? Because where it sits there, it really is a hazard when you're coming and going, and it's such a tight spot. And a lot of times, there's a lot of blind spots. So I'm thinking that if that thing could just be moved over to the Nichols side where the football field fence is, it might open up a little bit more of a visual of some sort. It really, I don't know who can...
Yunus, when we...
But I was just, I just thought I'd...
So what I'll say is, if you communicate, if I may, Council President, if you communicate the location with Zainab Hussain, we have a DT contact who's responsible for our area, and we can, we can call them immediately to see what can be done.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, because I went there a couple of times, and I realize and recognize that it really is not a good spot for it.
Correct. Just from a broader point, the McGraw substation went down completely during the flooding, and they're trying to rebuild.
And I know that it needs to be there, but if we can just maybe relocate it.
Yeah, and we'll communicate that with our DT contact.
Yeah, just, yeah. And on another side note, May 25th, we're having our, Fortins having their Memorial Day event, and you guys will be receiving an invitation. I hope we can see you all there, and don't forget the 100-year anniversary as well.
Thank you, Ms. Zaydan. Appreciate that. Appreciate your comment. Ann, thank you.
Good evening. I'm the governor to everybody observing. Mr. Mayor, good to see you again. Congratulations to those of you returning. My name is Rita Talib. I'm a lifelong Dearborn resident, and I am here today representing my mother, Mrs. Maryam Talib, and my sister, Ms. Nezwa Talib. It's sad that I'm here today, because I'm revisiting a public nuisance issue. The car wash located on 7333 Wyoming Avenue has terrorized my family, my neighbors, and my neighborhood for the 31 years that I have lived there. It is a shame that the previous administration neglected, whether willfully or not, to remedy this public nuisance. The harm continues. There are over 200 police reports. I have personally submitted pictures, soundbites of videos, people having sex, devocating, peeing, blasting radios, exhaust and fumes, trespassing onto our property. Twice, we've had to replace our private fence because of the water, the egregious smell of the soap. And probably the worst offense of all of this is that this facility purports to close at 10:00 PM. It has never closed at 10:00 PM. The electricity and the water are always on, inviting business invitees to come there and utilize the property. It is not, it is not the role of the police officers, although the ordinance does state that police officers can enforce this. It is not the role of police officers to take care of a business. It is the role of a business owner who has the privilege to actually operate a business and make money, to take care of their business and to maintain it reasonably. The only thing that needs to be silenced is this car wash. Our voices won't be silenced. And I come here in goodwill and peace, hoping that with a new administration and new members, that you all who had just talked about fasting, spiritually elevating ourselves morally, fasting is not just about curtailing your bodily needs and your desires. It's about fasting from those things that are harmful and toxic to the community. And the first thing we have to do is bear witness to the harm that's happening. The second thing that we have to do is hold one, hold ourselves and one another accountable. So what that looks like is decades of residents coming here. This car wash was built in '72. And even then, the neighborhood association and the residents who came and protested against this, their will was never heard, and it was never manifested. It is a shame that the city continues to allow this property to operate. It is insane, literally, if you look up the definition. The current status quo doesn't work. Whatever remedies and solutions are available don't work. We have to abate this, so I'm officially requesting a hearing before the NAB. And I would also like to know, if we could please be put on the agenda for the next meeting, because I did request that in March, but you all did have already a packed agenda, and so we couldn't be put on there. I respect that. We will not be silenced anymore. My mother is 79 years old, and she raised eight law-abiding, productive members of this community. She paid for that home with her own work ethic. And I won't sit here and watch that, I won't sit here and watch the harm occur anymore.
Ms. Topp, thank you very much. Your comments are well taken. What I'd like you to do is provide our executive assistant your information, so we can get back for you.
Thank you.
Regarding the agenda and how that works, we can discuss that offline at the end.
Thank you.
But we will, I am going to make official referral from the council to the administration or to the legal department to, we can have a memo regarding the violations or from, and the police department regarding these violations, and what's the status. And also from the DPW regarding if they have a CVO and what's the status of it at this time. So we'll gather that data, and I will make sure that we get it to you, and then we can further from that point.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Elswaf?
Slade, this is the same car wash, as all residents know, that's a coal car wash on Wyoming, correct?
Yes, it's an automatic car wash. They previously had, sorry, it's a self-serve. They previously had two automatic bays that were unlawfully put there by the previous corrupt owners, not the current ones. And the community got together and came before the zoning board, and we effectively stripped them of the variance to operate that. So right now, there are approximately seven self-serving bays and approximately eight vacuum cleaners that are being utilized. Plenty of pictures, plenty of video footage, plenty of police reports. Please let me know how I can help you.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Councilman Elswaf?
No, thank you for bringing this forward. And I know the state has a nuisance abatement clause, and if there is police reports that correlate to a nuisance in the area or in that business, I'd like to see if, within that threshold, where it is a nuisance now.
Well, the threshold is based on the council's opinion. The nuisance abatement board was created by this body, and we're the body that determines it. At this time, I think that it's been directly referred to DPW, police, and administration, the legal department to give us the data. And then this body can discuss at that time whether it's further to go forward on the nuisance abatement aspect, and we can gather the information. So I appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming and waiting for the time to speak.
Good morning. Oh, no, I'm sorry. It's good evening. We've been here a long time.
Almost morning.
And please, if I go beyond three minutes, start playing music, and I won't slap anybody.
All right.
Mayor, thank you for opening the door, and all of you, thank you for being great listeners and responding to the needs of Dearborn. After that story, I feel like mine is not as bad, but it is bad for our perspective. So my name is Therese Turnz. I live at 8 Abbott Lane. I live in Spring Wells Park. We are a deeds-restricted historical neighborhood. We currently have four Airbnb businesses. And if I can say Airbnb for the rest of the evening, just, you know, you'll know what I'm saying. On Brewster Street, approximately 100 yards within each other, four Airbnbs within 100 yards. The presence of Airbnbs has been discussed at our Neighborhood Association meetings and among affected, directly affected neighbors. My intention is to make the city council and the audience here, and those at home watching on CDTB, aware that Airbnb businesses have created, or I'm sorry, are, to be aware of the Airbnb businesses exist in Spring Wells Park, a residential neighborhood. To be brief, I will share just two examples of the many problems Airbnbs have created in our neighborhood. Spring Wells Park is unique in that we have a combination of single-family homes and duplexes that have shared driveways with one neighbor and shared driveways with another neighbor. One night, the homeowner of a duplex across a shared driveway from an Airbnb drove into his driveway to park his car and enter his own home. his driveway to park his car and enter his own home. When he got out of his car, seven men rushed out of the Airbnb, demanding to know who he was and what he was doing there. And he responded, "I live here, how can I help you?" The duplex owner was concerned about his 20-year-old daughter who was arriving home separately from him later that evening, so he had to be vigilant for her arrival home. On Tuesday, March 22nd, a very large and long RV vehicle and U-Haul trailer attached, pulled up and parked on Brewster, taking up approximately 45 to 50 feet of the available parking spaces, narrowing the passage of local traffic driving on the street. There is more to the story, but to be brief, the Airbnb customer assured the host of the Airbnb who lives in Connecticut that he had permission from the police, which proved to be untrue. He subsequently received two citations and an orange sticker indicating it was an abandoned vehicle. The RV was finally gone six days later, regardless of the citations. These are only two examples of the many that have occurred within a six-to-seven month timeframe, giving you a snapshot of the intrusion on property owners, surrounding neighbors, their rights, their safety, and their security. These transient, the transient nature of these businesses means continuous change and need for vigilant surveillance. Homeowners live in our neighborhood to have neighbors and to know who their neighbors are.
Sorry, your time has expired.
Okay, just a conclusion. I gave you all a copy of what I'm saying, so...
Yes, thank you.
We are requesting clarity on Airbnb regulations as they exist presently, and what are Dearborn's ordinances on short-term rentals at this time? There's a little bit more there, so if you don't mind reading that yourselves, and my information is on it, email, telephone number, and if anybody can give us some feedback on it, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turnz. We will, we will give that information back to you. I'll have our executive assistant have it there. And then for the council, Mayor, would you like to speak on it? I was going to refer it to Legal Department for a memo requesting it. I know there's House, I know there's state laws that supersede ours, so I'd like to get a memo on what is our current status on it.
So what I'll, what I'll say is, there's no state law currently in the books yet. There's nothing. It's in the Senate, and it's lingering there, and I don't imagine it to be moving. The goal of that bill is to be attached to a taxation of Airbnbs, and I'm not sure where that's going. As pertains to the local city, I don't think any previous council has adopted an ordinance as it pertains to Airbnb.
No, we have not. Not to my knowledge.
So I don't think, there's neither state law, nor county, nor city at this point in time.
Right, I understand. But I would like, one second. But I would just like for the council body, for Mr. Romer, to indicate to us if there's any ordinance regarding rentals and short-term rentals. I believe there's not, but I just want to make sure that we know what we have and what we can do. So I appreciate that.
Can you include?
Ma'am, would you like, yes, a follow-up?
Can you include economic development? Because building falls under...
Yeah, I apologize, Mayor. Okay, hang on, let's have some order. Mayor, what were you asking?
If you can include economic development in that request, because the Building Department falls within their purview.
Absolutely, Mayor. I appreciate that, and appreciate you bringing that to our attention. So we'd like to include Mr. Clerk, Economic Community Development Director, to weigh in on that as well. Mr. Moon, go ahead.
Also, I mean, it is a, it's a business that I believe, who keeps track of that would also consist of the assessor, right? Or who keeps track of where the business is?
It's a residential home.
Right. Okay, yeah, can, okay, go ahead.
Okay. Ma'am, go ahead, you can go ahead.
No, if you just recognized the idea of the duplexes, shared driveway, shared building...
We understand that.
Okay, and just finally...
My mom lives there, and I know exactly where it is.
Finally, we know that the Michigan House of Representatives passed HB 4722 last October to limit, limit local government regulation on short-term rentals. It will then move on to the Senate and ultimately to the governor to pass. So that's...
Yeah, we see that. We appreciate that. Thank you very much. Director Hawkins, did you have something to add on this?
In my previous department, we looked into this extensively, but we were never able to come to a solution. We treated Airbnbs as rentals. We made sure the homes were inspected in their yearly annual inspection, or biannual, I mean, every two years, three years. But yeah, we, I'm DPW now, you got to give me a break.
No, I'm good. No, you were a lot, no problem. That's why I'm asking for the memo.
But yes, we did, that's how we held them. The council prior members, we had one on Bennett, it was a really big deal. We found out it was an illegal rental to begin with. We got it in the rental process, did the inspections, and then the home continued to stay in Airbnb. After we got it in compliance through the rental process, we had no complaints afterward. So that's how they were addressed in the past.
Thank you. I do appreciate it, and I do understand the shared driveway and the Eastman aspect of that, as I indicated, my mom lives there, we have a shared driveway, she has a shared driveway as well, so I do appreciate that. Thank you, and we will refer that. Any other residents that would like to come and speak for it pertaining to city business, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Michael Kennedy, Finance Director. I was concerned I'd get it across, but I am able to establish this yet today, that I would like to be super excited and wish my daughter a 17, happy birthday today.
All right, all right. Mr. Kennedy, that's excellent. That's the best news you gave us without numbers in it.
Yeah.
All right. Seventeen, seventeen.
There's a lot of cost to that.
Right, right. Okay, is there anyone else from the public that would like to step forward to speak regarding city business? Please state and name your name and address for the record, and please keep in mind you have a three-minute limitation.
Okay. Eliana Hussain for 3535 Syracuse Street. I didn't even think I was going to say anything today. I appreciate Mayor Hamud on his remark about the Rahmat Foundation's mental health work, which I'm a board member of, and towards a statement I made at the last city council meeting regarding nonprofit fees and how the prices should be the same for all nonprofits. I do agree that nonprofits in the city do amazing work, but everyone should be charged. Nonprofits that weren't being charged before should be now if others are being charged. I found out today, actually, that another profit, nonprofit that uses the Ford Community and Performing Arts Center for several rehearsals and show dates were charged only $8,500 while I paid $5,000 for only 10 hours. Even if you start charging nonprofits that were getting free services before, they won't stop doing the amazing work they are doing. For example, I did a charity fashion gala in 2019, and my costs were about $9,500. My cost this year was close to $20,000, and I did it in Dearborn again, even though I could have found a lesser price in Dearborn Heights at like Royalty Manor. I still did it here because I care about Dearborn, I moved back here for a reason, I care about the city, I care about where I came from, so I still did it here, you know, $20,000 later. So did I get scared of how I was going to pay for this event? No. Did I back away from wanting to do good? No. I wanted to find a way to pay for mental health journals for students on our city, other cities, and for patients at psychiatric hospitals. So all the other nonprofits, even if they were getting free stuff from the previous administration, all they're going to do now is just work harder, even if they have to, because they have to pay for something, because they care about the cause and they want to do the good work. So I support the administration creating a set fee for all nonprofits, and none of them should be getting free services. No matter if it's for a small event or something big like the Ramadan Suhr festival, nonprofits should be paying for rental fees, permits, and especially police officers. So until a policy is put in place, I believe the council should not give any more waivers for nonprofits. Like, I don't want to be the bad guy, especially because I work for a non, like, I do stuff for a nonprofit. But it's going to prevent the council from having longer discussions, being put in a bad place, or having long, pointless debates like tonight or the previous meeting. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Points well taken. Thank you very much, Eliana. I appreciate that. Any other resident that would like to come forward and speak regarding matters pertaining to city business, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Okay. Seeing none, I would like to entertain a motion adjourned. Motion adjourned by Councilman Burns. We are adjourned.